I want to give this to you. Can you hear it whenever? On the payroll, uh, John, I think for the meeting of group, I love it. So she, and then she won't be, um, now, second half is on the very responsible. You want me to go forward or do an R check?
Okay, okay, okay. I have. Sure.
You know you're gonna need it.
I wish, I wish, I would. If you want me to turn it in for you.
That's all I need.
Yeah.
That's all I need.
Yeah.
I said, I don't expect it to just.
Okay.
Good. You had a lot of expectations.
I think we're gonna need it.
So you're off the hook for Friday.
Oh, okay.
I think because I forgot to tell you that we talked about you doing your presentation. So you're not on the agenda. So unless you think that you can give that without being on the agenda, it's not necessary because you can turn it into talk when you're in a jam or freeze. It feels like.
Yeah, I thought about it. But I'm thinking, you know, me and Charlie, you do such a better job with that training.
Yeah.
Then I'm thinking maybe we can just zoom a mentor meeting one day and just, you know, let him.
You're ready for the long?
Yeah.
There are some areas that, well, and I, I take that. You know, frequently, I find that some board members get better when they receive it from different channels.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I will, and I've told you. And I try to facilitate it whenever I can or adjust by just because I think third party education is valuable when you're doing training and anything else. If not, another reason why I was being a bystander. I can ask them something. If you're alone, isn't, you can't ask it, don't question it yourself.
Right, right, right.
And you can't go, oh, I didn't even think of that. You gotta be next one.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate it. Yeah. I totally hear that. It's a very good part of us two years.
One to go.
One down, one to go. You're gonna miss all the fun.
Hey, don't.
We have all this training. Are you gonna do the?
Don't we have beer, the culture meetings, paring crackers and beer?
Is this his official third party meeting or is it?
Next one.
Next one. Yes. He gets the whole day?
Yeah, but while I'm thinking about it, uh, the email that you sent out that the, our consultant wants to do virtual, this is what he's teaching this for, all the training and all that.
Yes.
We need to let David know.
I have. Oh, I have. Yeah, I did.
I'm not, I'm not even upset.
Yeah, I actually cut you out of my email, but he has your email.
Oh, okay.
From the other thing. So actually, that's what occurs to me. I don't think I gave him David's, but I've been, I've been putting him on stuff, but I don't know if he, if the consultant has David's.
So we talk about David.
No, it's, uh, each council member spoke to us on it. He does it all around.
When you finish the assessment and it goes to him.
I had caught him.
About three thirty.
Oh, I know, I have seven thirty.
So.
No, there's a cut. This is the, either you're.
Yeah, it's not that many. It's like, oh, my.
Yeah.
Two day conferences is like.
They're good, good government.
Okay. Yeah, because I think that would be very, I just thought.
No, I mean, I, yeah, I can, I've got that.
Yeah, there you go.
So there are times when the Spanish acquisition seems like a good time. Like it.
Yeah.
Put me in charge. I'll get some answers. Yeah, no, it's not good.
And then democracy, you turn. And it's like former, former preachers professor, now the judge, now the city. I'm honored to be here. Well, right from that, for me. Now, I've heard this before. And I agree that this is a very nice thing. And then democracy, it turns, it turns.
Yes.
USS Peter, destroyer. I said, in that democracy, you're, you're debating. Oh, yeah.
Sure. You could have debates in a dictatorship, too. They just didn't last very long. And the outcome is usually the same.
Same. As it is anyway.
Off the table.
Paul's not there. Somebody wasn't, uh, feeling, it takes this. I don't know.
I don't know.
Okay.
I, was it, was it Phil?
Because we were talking about doing that video workshop even today, but he was, uh, he said, I'm gonna be.
No, I asked that question. Is really, I don't know. Did you take your left side?
Yeah.
I don't. Yeah. 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 I thought he said that he was, he had some conference.
What did you know, Eric? Do you have hours on that? I couldn't talk to him. Because we're in the discussion about when to do that.
Right.
And it wasn't like Steve White or Paul. And Ken getting charged, well, let's try to learn. So, you know, somebody was still out. I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever you're close to. Well, they're there.
Yeah, we, we saw it already. Sure. And the whole president, they're there.
Do you want to run that?
It's like, you know, where the flip play, you know, like a pressure on someone's floor or? We can really see it Sunday.
Yeah, we, we want both.
Oh, well, you almost good. You almost good on Sunday. I mean, it was a lake out front of the church. And it was, I was parked, maybe thirty other street miles. And it was, we have a big sign there just over here. And I couldn't see, from my car, I couldn't see her. So that's all, or that is coming down.
A problem.
That's what it was.
And it couldn't, but it's.
Frustrating.
Hey, what's going on? The fancy pencil is almost a euro.
Is it?
Yeah. Gotta use a machete to show it.
Was it?
Probably not.
They'd ask me why I brought a knife because I fight.
You don't mind if you're a chicken. You go to the mall.
Yep. Thank you.
You'll tell him. Hello, how are you?
And it says on there, are you?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it was, it was nice. Uh, he's home for a week. Um, Monday, he flies out to, uh, California to, for schooling. Then he'll go to Japan. And then he'll come back for more schooling, and then he's back out to Japan. So. Kids there, living, sending their parents free twenty-four. I gave you a check over there. Becky is, I'm not. She asked me to deliver. Uh, sure, sure. But you're gonna spend it in Washington. I get it.
Wait, what is it?
No, it's your, it's your per diem, for decent travel.
Oh, okay.
I'm spending all those.
Well, don't make promises you might not keep.
I guess I can talk to Aaron about this if we, if we get over to the French Embassy if you could talk to, uh, Ernie, that Ernest, Ernie. Because, you know, Aaron had sent an email out. I guess to do an Ernie, maybe this to Ernie, but the two people who are great to talk to over there would be the French Embassy from a tourism standpoint and try to, because of Europe, they are the ones who come here most. And the other one is Department of Interior, uh, because Casterville is involved in that most of the rich board places, like six places in.
But what I'm gonna request is.
Huh?
What I'm gonna request is put this in a text or email.
To you. Yeah. I'll, I'll see what Aaron said, but I'll talk to him.
Yeah, because I'll, I'll get, I'll get learning if I can.
Even if I get this.
If you figure out, we remember tomorrow, we turn it on, right? There's a fifty-fifty. If you email it to me, there's a greater than ninety percent chance of it.
We'll send you something tonight, but even if he's pumped it, but I don't mind him there way over. He walked there and he was wondering if I was talking to him.
Good.
Monday, July thousand four hundred. They don't come back. And then you're not reporting on it. I like it. Yeah.
I think you're, you know, you're.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're close to all your.
Yeah.
Hey. So I can't get around. And then. I'm sorry. Yeah. Two minutes. Nice. I'm gonna get this, like, to help somebody, just some of that.
This is River Bluff.
Wonderful. How about you? Do you want to do it for us?
Yeah. Dewey? Dewey's? I saw the uniform.
Send him something. I don't have any. I don't listen to the girl. Anyway. I don't mind sending me that email. I don't worry, even if I don't. It's not a good job. It's fallen in here. Oh. She has better.
A survey. Mayor. I'll call, I'll call you on the, I'll call you on the bluff. I wanna, I wanna ask our folks from River Bluff how they heard about the meeting.
Yep.
I think that'd be good to do.
Yes.
At some point.
I'll do it at the beginning.
Did they get the hangers? Did they? Show of hands. I don't like it.
I like it. Uh, let me check on Mr. Carey.
Did he say what? I thought that's.
Like, he asked me, and I said, they said it's either Phil or Paul. And I'm like, I don't.
Okay. Well, since Phil's here, I'm guessing it's Paul.
That's what I.
She said she couldn't remember if it was you or Paul that wasn't gonna be here.
I guess it's Paul.
I'm like, it's a pretty safe guess that it's not Phil.
Harold's the one who, you remember, one of the dogs said that he could, like, just win two championships. But it's here, not, he's the worst thing.
Gotcha.
Oh, that's right, he did.
Oh, that's right.
He had a survey or thing he had to go to.
Ready? I'm pretty sure it's Paul.
You ready?
Yeah.
Paul, remind you of each other. You've insulted one of us and complimented the other.
Are you ready?
I'm not gonna tell you which.
All right.
Okay.
We are recording.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order if I can. How many, am I supposed to do that once or three times? I don't remember. I never use this. And I can't whistle like Chris Schuhart. He does a great job. And we're gonna call this meeting to order at five thirty-two. Thank you all for coming down here. Um, we are going to, I missed my, my thing over there. Uh, we'll start with a, uh, roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Phil King, District Three.
Harold Stein, District Four.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And District Two, Paul Carey is not here, and I am here, Darren Schroder, Mayor. Great. Uh, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation. We'll start with the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Of the Texas flag.
Honored under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Pastor Matt from Discover Church.
Would you bow your heads as we pray? Heavenly Father, we look to you today. We thank you for this opportunity to be in this room where decisions are made. We ask you for direction, wisdom, and guidance. Lord God, I ask that you will bless our council here that makes decisions. Bless them, bless their homes, may they never lack, Lord God, but give them insight to do what is best for this community and that this community will be blessed. We thank you for it. It's in Jesus we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. All right, thank you for that. All right, we will start with citizens' comments. If anybody would like to speak for citizens' comments, uh, please come and state your name, your address, and let's try and keep the, uh, comments to, under three minutes.
Twenty minutes? I know you've missed me. Probably thirteen, fourteen Gentiles. Uh, good evening, Mayor, council staff. Uh, I got an email this morning, uh, from the city asking me about a presentation that was made to council back in twenty sixteen concerning FBO operations at the city, vice the city running them, and which prompted me to, uh, to make a, make a couple of comments. I understand there's an interest in a commercial entity at the airport running some or all of the airport operations since, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, Mr. Patrick left. Uh, that's a huge decision. Uh, that is a enterprise fund for the city, and it needs to be, have full research done, uh, so that whatever, uh, you guys decide to do, you have all the facts, the pros, the cons, and everything else involved, and, and what it means to the city and to the airport in the future. That's exactly why you have an airport advisory board. And I will mention that everything that's happened at the airport, everything that's happened at the airport, security, hangars, ramp, runway, electronic devices, has all been suggestions from the airport advisory board going back to early two thousand, and, uh, and all approved and carried on by, uh, by this, uh, council. Anyway, uh, my, my recommendation is you determine the scope of what it is you're looking to have somebody else do out there, and then task them to bring you information. Uh, I've got twenty years working with the airport, either directly on the airport advisory board, uh, as the mayor, or giving advice for particular issues. Uh, and as you, some of you may know, twenty-four years ago, thereabouts, uh, the city spent and lost three quarters of a million dollars, give or take, uh, to take control of the airport back again because it was in terrible, terrible condition. Since the city's had it, it's become a model airport, frankly, and is in extremely, uh, extremely good condition and very attractive and fits right into the, to the future plans the city has made for that. Uh, but you think about money that the city's got to bring to all the improvements, all the grant, uh, stuff, the facility maintenance, that comes out of airport operations. And if you get an FBO, they've gotta have that money in order to make a living by equipment, you know, pay salaries, buy insurance, or anything else. You don't see that money anymore. So somewhere you gotta come up with money to, uh, to take care of all that other stuff. Uh, the city's reputation's tied to the airport, so people that wanna come here, locate to start a business out there, base airplanes, which has been the plan, they're gonna look and see what their reputation is. And, and with the city running it, the city's directly responsible to make sure the thing is in proper operation. Not the case if you turn over some of that operation to somebody else. Uh, anyway, I'm suggesting that, uh, you task, once you determine what you're looking at, the airport advisory board to bring you all the facts, what's happened in the past, and, uh, what the implications of that might be. Next, I was surprised to see an utility bill that we're responsible to turn in our neighbors if they have a code violation. That's ridiculous. The dog's parking or, you know, the house is on fire, I don't mind calling for help, but, uh, uh, if there's something else going on out there, the city's responsible, uh, to make sure that those things stay in, in code compliance, not, not the citizens. Thank you very much and good evening.
Great, thank you. Well, he timed that really well. Uh, is there anybody else that'd like to speak for citizens' comments? Scott.
Kyle McVeigh, three oh seven Madrid, Casterville. Uh, it'll be short. I'm here to promote, again, the animal shelter, which we've been working on for probably the last fifteen years. And supposedly you have the money now, supposedly it's, the holdup is finding the land or deciding on where you wanna put it. Please, I would still like to be alive to see this thing completed, and there's only X amount of time left. So please, 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 with all the, uh, things coming into the city now, all the growth and, they bring animals, they bring pets, and they abandon them. They have, uh, lots of puppies and kittens, and that's what Nip and Tuck has been trying for the last eighteen years, is to work with overpopulation. But it would be so nice if we had a place to work with. We could do so much more with our grant funds and our fundraising money if we actually had a facility that we could work with the city on. Thank you so much. Please consider it because I will come back at every meeting until you have it as an agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments? All right. Um, so just, uh, I, I assume that a lot of you are here for the River Bluff. We have about four items before that, and we'll get right to that. The next item is going to be the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes for April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, regular called city council meeting, the quarterly investment report, and the quarterly financial report ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next item is public hearing on a request for an amendment to the Alsatian Oaks Development Agreement, uh, planned use development plan. We're gonna open the public hearing at five forty. Uh, Scott, do you wanna bring that up on the screen just so that people have a chance to see what this is?
Yep.
And then just walk through the main items that have changed on there.
Okay. Uh, this is, there's not a lot of changes, frankly. Uh, you may recall they brought this, uh, forward, uh, some time ago, and, uh, the council did not approve some of the PUD amendments that they were seeking at that time. Uh, one of those was the location of the public, uh, dedicated public land. That's the two acres that you see in, uh, pink, right here. Um, it was previously, I think they, I can't remember where on the PUD they had moved it, but I, I wanna say it was, I don't know where they'd moved it to. It was way up north, northeast corner.
Yeah, all the way to the left, top left.
Yeah, it was like up here somewhere. So we didn't go for that. Said, no, we're not gonna accept that, or y'all did. And, uh, so this, so they put that back where it belongs, or where it was originally proposed.
Can you do that in full screen so we can see it a little bit better?
Uh.
And maybe, uh, try Ctrl, Alt, right arrow.
No, don't write that one down because it didn't work.
All right. Just trying to.
What do you, what do you?
I was thinking we could turn it so it'd be easier to see, but if you can just go to full screen.
Is the orientation north or south?
Uh, north is to the left.
Yeah, this is south, this direction.
Okay.
That's Highway ninety that's on the.
So this is, right here is the Walmart. Can you see my little cursor? Or no? Yeah. That's the Walmart. Um, this is Tondry Drive, and then, uh, the public land would be right next to Walmart. So that's one of the changes. And then the other change is, I believe, they updated the flood plain, um, in this bridge area. Is that accurate, Veronica? I think, I think that's really the two main items that got changed. So not a lot of change with this PUD amendment. Um, thank you.
Uh, will you just scroll down so that we can see all of this?
Uh huh.
Uh, and maybe shrink it up a little bit. There you go.
Is that better?
Yep.
That's the whole thing. So when you see, when you drive by and see that the land is being cleared, uh, by Alsatian Oaks, most of what you're seeing is this red area, which is their commercial area. That's what that red color represents. And again, this has not changed from their original submittal. And then, uh, you're also seeing most of this area, which is units one, two, and three, which have been platted, uh, and are in the process of being under construction. Just by way of information, it's not relevant to, to this, but, uh, they do have, uh, I think, eight homes permitted and eight more that are planned, uh, to be permitted very soon.
So when are they gonna connect then to ninety on their main thoroughfare?
Great question.
Okay.
But outside the.
I know that, we, we've asked, and I know that they are anxious to see that approved by, uh, Tech Dot. Um, I don't think they know when Tech Dot's gonna give that final permission. Depending on who you ask, they've done everything that they were required to do and asked to do by Tech Dot, and they're trying to convince Tech Dot that that is indeed the case so they can make the connection.
So since we're still in the public hearing version of this, did anybody have any questions or comments on this? All right. If not, uh, we'll close the public hearing at, uh, five forty-four. And next item is, uh, discussion and appropriate action on a request for an amendment to the Alsatian Oaks Development Agreement, Planned Use Development Plan. Uh, so the, well, let's start. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Dyer? Mr. Dyer, seconds? Okay. Uh, discussion, questions, comments? All right.
I guess, if I can just, uh, this drainage area here, flood plain crossing, they, they had changed a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess we run that through our engineers. I know Kimberley Horn submitted that, but we've looked at that also.
It's Kimley Horn. You know? Sorry. That's all right. I don't know why, I don't care.
Mm-hmm. It's Kimley Horn.
Um, yes. The, the short answer is, uh, yeah.
And they're happy with it.
Yes.
That's all the question I had.
All right, great. Anybody else? All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, next item. The eagerly anticipated public participation and discussion on information on, uh, construction phasing and expectations on River, uh, River Bluff electric upgrades. Um, so as we come into this portion of it, um, everybody that, I, I just wanted to kind of, uh, understand how our communication is working. We had committed to communicating as well as possible. Uh, we'd given the update before that we are going.
But you think about money that the city's got to bring to all the improvements, all the grant stuff, the facility maintenance, that comes out of airport operations. And if you get an FBO, they've got to have that money in order to make a living by equipment, you know, pay salaries, buy insurance, or anything else. You don't see that money anymore. So somewhere, you've got to come up with money to take care of all that other stuff. The city's reputation is tied to the airport. So people that want to come here, locate to start a business out there, base airplanes, which has been the plan, they're going to look and see what their reputation is. And with the city running it, the city's directly responsible to make sure the thing is in proper operation. Not the case if you turn over some of that operation to somebody else. Anyway, I'm suggesting that you task, once you determine what you're looking at, the airport advisory board to bring you all the facts, what's happened in the past, and what the implications of that might be. Next, I was surprised to see an utility bill that we're responsible to turn in our neighbors if they have a code violation. That's ridiculous. The dog's barking, or you know, the house is on fire, I don't mind calling for help. But if there's something else going on out there, the city's responsible to make sure that those things stay in code compliance, not the citizens. Thank you very much, and good evening.
Great, thank you. Well, you timed that really well. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak for citizens' comments?
Kyle McVeigh, 307 Madrid-Casterville. It'll be short. I'm here to promote, again, the animal shelter, which we've been working on for probably the last 15 years. And supposedly, you have the money now. Supposedly, it's the holdup is finding the land, or deciding on where you want to put it. Please, I would still like to be alive to see this thing completed. And there's only X amount of time left. So please, please, please. With all the things coming into the city now, all the growth, and they bring animals, they bring pets, and they abandon them. They have lots of puppies and kittens. And that's what Nip and Tuck has been trying for the last 18 years, is to work with overpopulation. But it would be so nice if we had a place to work with. We could do so much more with our grant funds and our fundraising money if we actually had a facility that we could work with the city on. Thank you so much. Please consider it, because I will come back at every meeting until you have it as an agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments? All right. So just, I assume that a lot of you are here for the River Bluff. We have about four items before that, and we'll get right to that. The next item is going to be the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have minutes for April 11th, 2023, regular call to city council meeting, the quarterly investment report, and the quarterly financial report ending March 31st, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is public hearing on a request for an amendment to the Alsatian Oaks Development Agreement, Planned Use Development Plan. We're going to open the public hearing at 5:40. Scott, do you want to bring that up on the screen just so that people have a chance to see what this is? And then just walk through the main items that have changed on there?
Okay. This is, there's not a lot of changes, frankly. You may recall, they brought this forward some time ago. And the council did not approve some of the PUD amendments that they were seeking at that time. One of those was the location of the public, dedicated public land. That's the two acres that you see in pink, right here. It was previously, I think they, I can't remember where on the PUD they had moved it, but I want to say it was, I don't know where they'd moved it to. It was way up north, northeast corner.
Yeah, all the way to the left, top left.
Yeah, it was like up here somewhere. So we didn't go for that. Said no, we're not going to accept that. We all did. So this, so they put that back where it belongs, or where it was originally proposed.
Can you do that in full screen so we can see it a little bit better? And maybe try Ctrl, Alt, right arrow?
No, don't write that one down, because it didn't work.
Just trying to.
What do you?
I was thinking we could turn it, so it'd be easier to see. But if you can just go to full screen.
Is the orientation north or south?
North is to the left.
Yeah, this is south, this direction.
That's Highway 90 that's on the-
So this is, right here is the Walmart. Can you see my little cursor? Or no? Yeah. That's the Walmart. This is Tondry Drive. And then the public land would be right next to Walmart. So that's one of the changes. And then the other change is, I believe, they updated the floodplain in this bridge area. Is that accurate, Brian? I think that's really the two main items that got changed. So not a lot of change with this PUD amendment. Thank you.
Will you just scroll down so that we can see all of this? And maybe shrink it up a little bit? There you go.
Is that better?
Yep.
That's the whole thing. So when you see, when you drive by and see that the land is being cleared by Alsatian Oaks, most of what you're seeing is this red area, which is their commercial area. That's what that red color represents. And again, this has not changed from their original submittal. And then you're also seeing most of this area, which is units 1, 2, and 3, which have been platted and are in the process of being under construction. Just by way of information, it's not relevant to this, but they do have, I think, eight homes permitted, and eight more that are planned to be permitted very soon.
So when are they going to connect then to 90 on their main thoroughfare?
Great question.
Okay.
But outside the-
I know that, we've asked, and I know that they are anxious to see that approved by Tech dot. I don't think they know when Tech dot is going to give that final permission. Depending on who you ask, they've done everything that they were required to do and asked to do by Tech dot. And they're trying to convince Tech dot that that is indeed the case, so they can make the connection.
So since we're still in the public hearing version of this, did anybody have any questions or comments on this? All right. If not, we'll close the public hearing at 5:44. And next item is discussion and appropriate action on a request for an amendment to the Alsatian Oaks Development Agreement, Planned Use Development Plan. So the, well, let's start. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Dyer, seconds? Okay. Discussion. Questions? Comments? Right?
I guess, if I can just, this drainage area here, floodplain crossing, they've had to change a little bit. And I guess we run that through our engineers. I know Kimberly Horn submitted that, but we've looked at that also.
It's Kimley Horn.
Sorry.
That's all right. I don't know why, in character.
It's Kimley Horn.
Yes. The short answer is, yeah.
And they're happy with it.
Yes.
Question.
All right, great. Anybody else? All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, next item. The eagerly anticipated public participation and discussion on information on construction phasing and expectations on River Bluff electric upgrades. So as we come into this portion of it, everybody that, I just wanted to kind of understand how our communication is working. We had committed to communicating as well as possible. We had given the update before that we are going to go back and redo the power, the same way that it was installed. We were able, staff worked with our contractors to find a good alternative that was both cost-effective and had the least long-term impact on residents. We had also committed to making sure that we were communicating well with you. So I just want to understand, so how many, if you can just bear with me for a second, how many people, by a show of hands, got the door hanger? Okay, great. Did anybody hear about it through social media?
Yeah.
All right, next door. And you?
Next door.
Next door, great.
I have one, one question about iInfo. So the very last presentation, and I'm glad I stayed, was how to do the geographic, and it's super easy, notification. Is there anybody in here that is not on our iInfo alert system? That is not on?
Or let's say-
Is there anybody in here that doesn't know what I'm talking about? Anybody, show of hands, you want to talk about iInfo? Okay.
Okay.
So there is-
And by a show of hands, how many people do have iInfo?
I have it, but I still don't get messages like I'm supposed to.
I have that same problem.
Really?
Uh huh. And I brought it up to Kathy and all that, all the time.
Okay, well, we're going to be, the good news is, the staff is lacking a lot of training. There's a lot of, we only, we're using like, not even a tenth of what its capabilities. But we now have the ability to do through iInfo alerts that are geographic. So we can select, as long as everybody is on the system. This is the way, by the way, so this is the warning system the county uses in case of major disaster. It can also be used, there's other things you can sign up for, like newsletter, or information about public works when there's issues, and that kind of thing. So our intention is with this project, one of our main methods of communication will be iInfo, but it will be to the select groups that are impacted. So for instance, if we know that, hey, this week, we're working on this, this part of the project, and we have this related issue, we can, we can actually send out in real time information to just the side of the street and the houses that are impacted. And until, I mean, I say we can, we still, we're going to have to go through the training to get this done, but it's not hard. So I'm really looking forward to be able to do that. But we need to make sure that we have everybody on iInfo. So one of the things that we'll be doing for River Bluff specifically is comparing our list of the folks that we show in iInfo on River Bluff with the addresses that are in River Bluff to identify who we don't have. And then I think we may have to just do a door-to-door campaign to knock and say, hey, sign up, or leave something. So we'll work on that aspect that it gets you signed up. But that'll be a great way for us to communicate. It goes to email, text, whatever you prefer. It'll even make phone calls and play you a recorded message, if that's the way you prefer to get contacted. So.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we have this long-term communication set up, so that, like, my biggest thing is, I want to make sure that you don't, that you know exactly what to expect. There's no surprises. And I've told our staff that my, my test of our success in that is that we don't get calls. Because if you are surprised, or if your neighbors are surprised, we should get calls, and we should understand what's going on. We want to make sure that this is, it's going to be a long-term project, and it will impact your lives. We just want to make sure that you know exactly when it will, where it will, and how it will. So let's start with, you want to do the presentation?
Yeah, we do have a presentation. I want to recognize a couple of folks that, first off, this has been a long time coming, as you are well aware. The city took the extraordinary step of ordering all of the parts and placing those on order as soon as we could. And so some of those items had an over, over a one-year lead time, and some of those lead times were extended during this whole mess. But we're grateful to Carl Williams, who's here with Greenstone. He is your contractor. He is the COO of the company, so he's the chief operations, chief of operations, chief of operations, I love operations, I love you. So he will be walking us through kind of the plans for the development. And then Chris Harker is also here with Schneider. Schneider's been kind of the backbone of getting this whole thing designed, and helping the city wrap its arms around what needed to be done, how it needed to be done, walking through the bids, and getting a bid out, and walking us through ordering the right parts. And there's been a lot of handholding to make sure that we were doing everything we needed to do to do this as quickly and efficiently as possible. Even though it seems like it wasn't quick, because it wasn't. So we're now, we're finally ready to start the project. I'll let, I think I'm going to turn over you, Paul. So if you would, podium's right there, and I'll be your vanna. I don't have, this is not in PowerPoint, so I'm just going to flip. But this is what was delivered to the council.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name's Carl Williams. I'm with Greenstone Electrical Services. Thankful for the city to pick us to help you all with this problem you'll have in your neighborhood. Who we are a little bit. So we are a local company. We're actually based out of Church, New Braunfels. Grew up in the area, grew up in South Texas, so we are from here. So if there's any issues, problems out in the field that my team cannot handle, you're going to get a phone call from me from here, not someone in Alabama or Mississippi. We are local, okay? It's kind of who we are a little bit. So, you know, a little bit of touch about safety and whatnot. So we're real big on safety. Who we are, we're recognized by some of our bigger clients we work for. So we do have the background of what we're doing here. Just some examples, we work for MBU, New Braunfels Utilities, for, I think, 10 years now. CPS Energy, GVEC, City of Austin. So we do know what we're doing. I know we're, in the grand scale of things of what we do, we're a smaller company compared to the big competitors, but we do have a lot of knowledge and a lot of background. We're doing several of these projects right now across the area that we serve, from New Braunfels to all the way down to Seguin area.
Carl, I think it's, I think it's important to mention that specifically-
Yes.
Doing a backyard replacement of buried cable-
Yes.
Similar to what we're using, same kind of type and size of cabling, dealing with transformers that have sunk. This, the scope of this project-
Yes.
Is virtually identical to a project there, I don't know if you're still working on it, or you just wrapped it up.
We finally got 98% of the civil work done. This, we started this project February of last year. It's a whole rebuild, New Braunfels, what we're doing. It's called River Tree. So basically, their, New Braunfels decided to go from backyard overhead line to front lot underground. So it's a complete rebuild. Okay? So, test base, real quick, before I get into the nitty-gritty of what y'all are going to start seeing. So here's some of our contacts for us. So, of course, I'm on there. Margot's on there, she's CEO. Y'all probably will never talk to her, honestly. Tony is on my team, one of my managers, that will be out here with my, what I call my civil group, my big group. And then Rudy Garza is my, what I call my crack electrical crew type guy, so he knows all the electrical ins and outs and whatnot. And then we run things a little different. I have actually a dispatch team in our office, so locates customer complaints. It'll all go to the office, you'll talk to the ladies in the office, and then they'll distribute it where it needs to go. And of course, our safety manager, too, is on here as well. Okay? So next slide. This is kind of the phases that we are planning, how we're going to start. If you look up here, it's kind of hard to see, but you see the yellow outline? That is the very beginning where we're going to start. That is what I call the three-phase backbone. That's in the backyard, along that drainage ditch, down there to the south. And it goes all the way back around to, was it, not, what is it? Sorry.
Geneva?
Geneva.
Yes. So our plan is to get that in first, and then go up in the blue to the far left, phase two, and basically build the outline of the whole subdivision first. Get all that ready to go. And then we're going to come back, where you see the red on phase three, or sorry, phase five.
This is phase three.
Yes.
This is phase four. So the perimeter is in phases, it's in four phases.
That's correct. So the perimeter is going to be done first. Then we're going to go back and start digging streets.
This is phase five.
Right. So that's kind of the outline of how we're going to run construction. Now things could change with these type of projects. We might have to skip over and move to phase five because of something coming up on phase three. I can't answer that question. It's going to change from day to day. With these projects, nothing is set in stone. Okay? We don't know what's underground until we start getting involved. If you'll go ahead and move, move some stuff up for me there. So I'm here today, so I put some kind of examples of what y'all are kind of, how, what the, how boring works and what it does. So it's called directional boring. It's to be basically not open trenching, which is tearing a lot of land up to do that, okay? But at the same token, there's only so much that we can do, okay? So it all depends on the dirt underneath us. If we hit, if we hit rock-
Rock.
If we hit, the worst, the worst, I mean, I'm not, I'm here tonight not to sugarcoat this project. Okay? I met with them, I met with the city, they understand what's fixing to happen. So cobblestone, what I call timber rock, which I, y'all have a lot of out there, is the worst of boring. Okay? It's going to take some time. Okay? With that, there's not a lot of steering, so we may, we may meet with a homeowner and say, you know what? We're going to skip past your, past your front yard or your backyard without a problem. And the next thing you know, we can't steer, we can't turn. So guess what? We're going to open up what I call a bore pit to get that to turn and get it to go where we need to go. So y'all need to be clear and upfront of what's fixing to happen. Y'all are going to love us to get this project started, but by the end of this time, make sure you're going to hate us. I promise. Okay?
Well, we hope not.
No, I'm telling you, I'm speaking for experience.
This project has been a long time coming.
I understand. So these are kind of some examples of how it works. Some sized pit. It could be anywhere from four to five foot.
You've got a couple of pictures in here.
Yeah, four to five foot by four foot deep is where I want to stay. But there's been times where we've had to go nine by 10 by 14. I mean, it all depends on what we've run into. Here's, here's kind of some examples of the equipment you're going to see. The first thing you're going to see us out here doing is what I call hydro vacuum, which is the far left-hand picture. In the middle picture there, it's going to look like we're not doing anything. You're going to see orange fencing everywhere with hole covers, all down our bore path. And what we're doing, we're locating all the underground facilities that are there. So that's water, that's sewer, that's gas, telecoms. We have to locate all that stuff, get measurements on depths and where it's going, before we'll put a bore rig in to start digging for safety. Okay? Another picture down there, so that's actually about a mid-sized bore rig that you'll probably see, you'll be seeing in your backyards. The one on the far bottom left-hand corner.
Bottom left.
Right here? That's bore rig. So that's a 30, so that's, that's the size that we're going to be using up here. Okay?
How big is that?
So these are, these are 10-foot rods right here. So overall, that machine's about 20 to 24 foot long. Okay? About 68 inches wide, or sometimes a little bit wider. All depends on the rack they put on there.
Now these go, the distance between the bore, boring, how many yards are you going across with that?
We go by feet. And I'm going to tell you right now, because it's a, what we call a double rod machine, a rock machine, we're only going to probably go about 350 feet, 400 at the max, because of the soil we're going to be in.
So my point is, that, that may not be your backyard. It may be on the end of the block, pushing a-
It could be. It could be. We could be good. I can tell you wherever, whoever has a transformer in their backyard, you're going to be seeing this. Okay? I can tell you, we're going to be taking fences down. You're going to, we're going to have that machine in your backyard. Okay? So because of this is a maintenance project, I'm going to be upfront with you to cut out this time down, and y'all being without power, because I just can't change transformer out in one day. This is a project that's going to take months. Right. So I'm going to tell you, we're going to get that transformer as close as possible. But everything that I'm seeing right now, I'm probably going to be setting the new pad and new transformer to the side of that old one. And that way, when it comes time to transfer everything to the new system, we're pulling the old stuff out, and it's a faster transfer. Okay? I cannot set a transformer in the same location because of the fact that it would kind of job this less. Okay? So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be really nasty.
Why, the transformer's large?
They're about the same size as what you have here.
Okay. I have a question. Y'all are going to come in the backyards, what, like in the street, and take fences down and go that direction? Or you're going to come through people, front yards, to get to the back?
In a, in a perfect world, I would love to. I would love to take 20 foot of that fence down and just run a straight line. But unfortunately, because of trees, pools, flower beds, I'm telling you, it's all outsheds.
So I have a question-
Yes, ma'am.
-because on where I'm at, there is a thing on the plaque when we bought the house, you can't plant 12 feet from the-
Yes, ma'am, I'm very aware of what you're talking about.
So the people that have stuff that's in that 12-foot zone-
Yes.
It's kind of like-
That's where I'm relying on the city to be my support.
Right.
Like, I don't have a choice. Like, we've got to-
Can they give you data? Or what?
Well, yes, ma'am, pretty much. But I got to have the city's support for that, honestly.
So- I think this is something we talked about. This is our third town hall.
Yes, sir.
I recall us talking about at least one of them, Chris, when we were identifying the over, the aerial pictures of some of these backyard fences. And yeah, there's, there's some pools that are well within that 12-foot. There's some storage sheds, especially-
I've already, I've already been poking around a little bit out there the past three weeks. You've probably seen me kind of back and forth.
So where we can, we're just going to try to go under or next to all that stuff.
Yes.
But if it, if push comes shove, we'll be calling and we'll probably schedule a meeting and talk about it.
So, for sure. Yes, sir.
All right. Everything that you're putting in is going to be within easement?
Yes, I have to stay within easement.
Old stuff that's next to the house, you're going to abandon?
That's correct. Yes, sir. Yeah, because it's what we call direct buried. All the cable out there is direct buried. So we're not, we'd have to essentially dig up your whole backyard to find it and get it out. We're not going to, we're just going to, basically when everything is said and done, we're going to dig it up a little bit, cut it off, and it's going to stay. Okay?
So, but where the line goes, we're going to try to keep it from our house, not within the easement.
Okay.
Our side of the street, going down River Trail-
Yes.
The, all of our utilities is right in our front yard, right beside the street.
Okay.
And that's, and it comes across the street from the other side of where the transformers are.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, there's services across the road.
They're next to your house, though.
They're, yeah, our transformer-
I would like to know where that, where, what your address is. Okay.
109 River Trail.
Yeah, and I'm 113, the right side of me.
Okay. Are y'all across the street from her?
Right beside. Same side.
So what you have in your, so what you have is secondary service boxes in your house. The primary, what I call the backbone primary is on the other side of the street. Yes. So that stuff's all going to stay. Okay? If, what we're doing is, we're going to find your service that's direct buried. We're going to dig it up, and we're going to put secondary boxes where those services at, and then we're going to pipe to those new boxes. Does that make sense? So you're still going to have service going to the house. That's not going away.
Oh, no.
Yes, sir.
No, the, okay. The power in our front yard goes to her house.
Yes.
And it comes across the street.
Yes.
But it's not in the city's easement.
Okay. So we'll need to look at that and see. I can tell you that we are not going to dig that up unless I'm told different to fix. But we will locate it, and we will set a box basically at the property, at the property line, closer to the street, where it's in easement, where it comes in. Okay? But as far as digging it up out there in the middle of your lot, unless they tell me different, I'm not going to worry about that. Yeah. Yes, sir. Correct. Whatever the utility setback easement is, yes, sir. Right.
And it's like our gas line actually runs across the front door.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, you'll find River Bluff is a unique beast.
I'm sure of it. I'm already finding stuff-
Yeah.
As I walk in. So.
Just like you say, also, where we don't have easements, where it'd be in the right way in front of the house. So there's, there's a point where you have a property line, and for your house, it's all grass, but that's right away. Then we can occupy that space without having easement.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that-
So understand what we're talking about. There's easements and right of ways. And that's basically the two areas we're going to be staying. Okay? What else do we need to talk about?
Let me scroll down.
So we are, we are going to start, it looks like we're going to be rolling in probably first to mid-part of May, depending on how some projects are finishing up with my crews. You're going to see me, so I have a, so I wrote out a rough construction schedule. You're probably going to see us all the way up to October 24. You have to realize what we're doing here, guys. We're digging around live power, live gas. You know, it's, it's going to be, I'm, honestly, I'm not even concerned about comms. No, we'll find them and we'll take care of them. But I worry about the power and the gas are the two I'm worried about.
So how much time? So you're saying we're not going to lose electricity in this process, or we call?
We're going to, we're going to try, we're going to try our best that everything goes smooth. I'm not going to sit here and guarantee. It all depends on locators and locates, too.
This has to be determined whether I'm going on vacation or not.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. I can tell you, I can tell you that we do, we are very careful what we do. Okay? And there's only, the handful of times that we have lost power to a subdivision has been because of bad locates, not because we didn't locate something. Lots of rough stuff.
Yeah. Apparently, they're going to hate you anyways, so it's all right.
So, yeah. Well, I prefer, I prefer a solid, hard rock than I do- Well, I prefer, I prefer solid hard rock than I do what I saw out there on the ground.
Well, we also have the canal that seeps down, so it's just everything in the neighborhood.
Yeah. So yeah, this is gonna be a good project, so...
There'll be no water in that canal this year.
Right.
There's nothing coming.
So there's a picture that, this is a picture I looked at earlier.
Here, here's some actual live pictures of projects that we are, have, have completed or in the middle of. Um, so that one far left-hand top corner there, that's a bore pit, that's what it's gonna look like. Um, and then you can see some other pictures where we were excavating in yards right there. Uh, that picture to the right is actually a, a junction box being built, being plumbed in.
What this looks like after.
Yep, and then that's the pad sitting on top, right there, ready to go, and then that's the finished product towards the bottom. Okay?
So like what I was trying to do, average time, like per section?
Yes.
Two weeks, eight, five days?
I'm looking, I'm looking, so each section, I'm averaging right now around six to nine weeks, per section.
This is, this is the schedule.
So like, can you narrow the family, like, like three houses, or...
No, because you gotta understand what this is, so, but I have to build the whole thing to come back to full wire and energize it, get it all, everything hot, and then once the, what I call, what we call the primary, the transformers are all energized and straight, then I can come back and say, okay, these four houses, we're gonna take a clearance and add it to on this day, because now we're gonna intercept everything and get them into new transform.
All right, so for those of us, those of us who work from home?
Yes.
What kind of, uh, down, time?
I'm gonna tell you, whenever it's time for your, out of your, your clearance, expect a day.
A day?
A day.
I mean, is that an entire day?
And it, yes.
We'll go fish, bro.
I'm, I'm gonna just call, I'm, I'm just gonna call it, yeah, I'm just gonna say yes. Okay? Now, we could be done in four hours, kudos, right? I don't know until we get involved. And that's just how these projects work, unfortunately.
It's only a day, I'm good.
Right. No, you'll have power on before we leave that project. I don't care if we gotta lay pipe on the ground and get something temporary because we ran into something huge, we're gonna get you back on before the end, before we leave that job. I promise you that. We're not gonna leave you out of power.
So, so for, uh, when, so when it comes time to take down fences and that?
Yes.
What kind of notification are you gonna give, because some people have pets in the backyard?
So, it is my, it is our plan to give to, when we start a section, and that's the good thing about this project, is that the four first sections are really kind of not in the backyard, so to speak. So we'll be able to say, okay, in three weeks, we're gonna start this road. So in three weeks, we're gonna start sending that notification out, hey, we're coming on this date. Hey, we're coming on this date, that way y'all know. And then we're right up to, like, two days before, in two days, we will be taking your fence down in your backyard. Okay? To get in. So, we're gonna try to put them back temporarily every day, so y'all can have your pets out, of course, and all that stuff. But it, it's gonna be a nuisance for a while, until we get the scene cleaned up and get it done.
Just for touching on that expectation?
Yes sir.
They're gonna be, you're gonna bore all the conduit initially, probably phases, so it's all time to clean this hole.
Yes.
And then they're gonna come back, there're gonna be holes, covered holes.
Covered holes with fence around it, yes.
Are all around your backyard, until they're finished boring all the conduit in, in the whole subdivision. Then they're gonna come back with a different crew, and they're gonna install equipment locations, they're gonna put in conduits, they're gonna stow the conduits at those hole locations. And they're gonna fill it in, put a concrete pad there, put the equipment on top of the transfer service over, so that it's, you're not gonna have a patch of backyard for that duration of time. So, they're gonna go through, drill all of that.
Right.
So are you gonna be putting fences up after you drill through and then put the fence down?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So they'll have complete fence, so you go through and drill?
Correct. Yes.
Can you, um, bury fence, or...
Or are you gonna take down a section of your existing fence, and then I'm gonna put a fantastic fence back in place?
Right. So...
How long is the fence steps?
The fence will be down the whole day. So if, if, if we're working and it's running on about four-thirty, we need to be calling it quits at five, we're gonna stop, the, the equipment might stay in your backyard, okay? We're gonna do everything we can to get that fence up. If your fence won't go because of the equipment or whatever is in the way, at least we'll have construction fence up. We'll have some type of fence up overnight, basically, to get that, to get, that way y'all can have your yard in the, in the evening, okay?
And what I heard Chris say is that when you dig these holes, the holes are there. They're there until you finish the project, which means months, a hole.
Could be. I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try not to. My goal is to get ahead of that bore crew, to after, when the, when they start boring, everything's ready to go to where my crew can, my crews can circle back around behind them as they finish piping, and that way we can kind of close holes up.
Still weeks of a hole?
Weeks.
So, the, the point is, if you're lucky enough to have a hole in the, in your backyard?
Yes.
And you also have, like I do, two small dogs?
Right.
Yeah, you're gonna have to make sure your dogs, you know, aren't falling in a hole, or, or, you know, children, or grandchildren.
We, now, holes, okay, so holes we will cover with plywood, again. They'll be covered, okay? But you might have gaps now, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be like solid a hundred percent, don't step on that plywood, you know? We'll have plywood over, we'll have orange fence around them. The ones in the front yard, because there's places where we'll be in the front yard, we'll have steel plates on them because of public safety, right? I can't just use plywood for that. So those will be steel plated and fenced, okay? Gonna try not to.
There is a reason, we, we are waiting until after this project is done.
That, that was one of my requests, is we're not touching our roads until this is done. Because it makes no sense to spend millions of dollars redo our roads when we're doing this.
So we're gonna be boring underneath y'all the driveways. Okay, but, but, hold on, okay? I'm not gonna say, uh, the way I, everything is looking right now, it looks like all your sewer and water is front lot, we're only back lot. But there is times where normally sewer, what I call sewer laterals, or, you know, from the house to the street, doesn't get located. So we do our best to find them, but there is times, I can, I can tell you right now, there's been two so far in, in New Braunfels right now, that we have bored and we've hit it. And we've had to cut concrete driveways to repair it, but then we have to replace that section of driveway.
Is there time to dig it, though, as far as like driving, and we need to move it far out of the garage, out of...
We will make sure that's planned and said if we have to involve, but I can tell you right now, I'm not gonna get a lot of that at all on this project. Yes ma'am. Sure. Okay? Any other questions?
Yes, and we are at the questions portion of this presentation, so...
Yes. Here's kind of a rough construction schedule that I laid out, um, with kind of weeks of what it's gonna be and kind of a rough date. And if you notice in bold lettering somewhere up there, I put rough, I think on the bottom, because I can't control what we don't know.
Does it turn section one, or like days?
Yes, it does. Yes.
You didn't put rough, sir.
Yeah, he did.
You meant to, did he?
No, he did. It's on the next page.
Oh, it's on the next page. So basically what this is, how I have it laid out, is I have it laid out as sections of crews. So, I have my bore crew up, that's number one, my civil crew, which is my pipe crew, and filling crew, and setting pads. And then my U R D crew, which is actually what I call the craft, which is the wire. They do all the wiring and making up terminations or whatever. So that's kind of how it's laid out.
Are there any new transformers being put out in addition to what we already have?
Not that I'm aware of, no. There is gonna, there is at the very beginning up there by that three-phase riser pole, there's gonna be some new stubs we're gonna put in while we have it open, because there's lots of sold, I understand. But that's, that's all for now.
Just speaking to, just as a reminder, so, one of the things this project does, it does more than just, you know, replace the aging, uh, direct buried stuff that's been causing nightmares for a lot of folks for, for a number of years. It also brings, um, some redundancy to the neighborhood by creating a three-phase looped electrical system. So that in the event, there is a failure, and the unlikely event there's a failure in the future, you won't, it won't be a subdivision without power, it'll minimize the number of people impacted. So when he looked at that first phase and he showed you that kind of goldish brown color, that is the, the three-phase loop, so that's actually going in first. Uh, and then he'll come in and, and replace the rest of the system. It won't actually help, really, until we're, we're done, I believe, but, um, I just wanted to reiterate that this is more than just, you know, fixing what's there, but actually improving what's there as well.
Okay, so I think it's on an area where I'm not connected to any of those. So, right, I live in Geneva Court.
Okay. Geneva Court, is that Cul-de-sac Road, correct?
Yes.
So the right?
Just before the bridge, coming out of the neighborhood, yes.
Yes ma'am. So we're not gonna be down that court, but we are gonna be down Geneva there, because we're adding another, another power line in there to complete the loop for the subdivision.
So what I wanna know is, so when the power goes off anywhere, does that, do I still loop my power? Does that, what does that do for me? What does any of this do for me?
Because you're right here, right? You're, you're, you're right here, correct?
Yes.
Right here, right?
Yes.
Okay, so right now, you're, you're on what we call a radial feed. So if something happens in this wire, and it goes out, you're done. What we are doing, we're putting reliability. So we're building three-phase from this point all the way up here. So essentially, all this is gonna be tied together to where if something happens right here, we can open up that piece of cable and feed you from this piece of cable to get you back on the house.
A lot of people don't understand three-phase, two-phase, three-phase.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I just, it's just that I'm not in the color, that's why I was wondering.
Well, they're actually, yeah, because you're existing, you're existing there. So I believe right here, I believe you're a-phase timer, yeah, a-phase. Okay, so that's why it's in black, because what we're doing, we're just adding one pipe down this street to get two phases tied in over here, to get the loop completely disassembled.
And I wasn't inside anything.
Right.
Hanging out on my side here.
I believe right here, I think there's a junction box that's going in right here. Um, and then I think there's, might be another little baby up right here or something, I can't remember.
There's one there.
There's more reliability than you have currently.
That's correct, that's not what we're doing.
But, but since you're drawing up the cul-de-sac, there's a primary line and civil phase. If any equipment within that given area goes out, that whole line won't be in. And it does a great radial feed. But otherwise, everybody's looped in right now. And we're creating a loop before that feed to your house right now by adding this, by doing this construction. So it'll be more, it'll be more reliability than you have currently.
Okay.
So one...
So that's why I was wondering if I was...
Do you have a better position than you are now?
So one of, one of the big problems that I'm sure you've seen when you've looked at what we got is we, we have a lot of shifting of ground?
Okay.
There in the neighborhood.
Yes ma'am.
So with the new laying of pipe and that, is this going to make it to where if the ground shifts, the pipe won't be separated from the transformers?
No, so what we use, no, so what we use, we use roll pipe, okay? That roll pipe is a continuous piece of pipe, there's no joints in it. The only joint is where the ninety comes up out of the ground. Okay? With that being said, um, I have seen a whole bunch of shifting and never had a ninety come off a roll pipe.
Okay.
Okay? So we're gonna be in good shape. Yeah, it, yeah, it moves with, with the land.
Because that, that's one, another problem that we have in the neighborhood.
Keep in mind, our big issue with the, with the direct buried stuff, at least, this, and Tom's back here, so he can tell me if I'm lying, but I believe the big issue is, is part just faults, because it is direct buried cable. The cable fails.
Right.
The insulator on it fails, something on it fails, and then it faults.
Correct.
And then you gotta go find it, dig it up, and fix it.
And it's probably non-communicative.
This is going to be inside of an insulator and a solid...
Inside of a conduit.
Does away with what has been the chief issue of the reliability in, in River Bluff. And, and actually, your neighbors in, or your distant neighbors in Country Village have the same problem.
Phase two?
Yes sir.
Because most of the time, the box is front, are y'all gonna have the bus in our backyards too? Or like the left side of River Bluff going up against?
No, sir, we're gonna be in the front, right here. In the front, and I believe there's conduit all the way up to this point, so actually the bore will not start till here to go down through there.
Right.
This is already a conduit. So let's be replacing transformers and cleaning up stuff as we're going.
Unless you're having a bargain.
So we will not be in the backyard there. So...
To Scott's point, you're saying that everything's gonna be five of them now, so if any cable fails, if there's any damage to any cables, within this conduit, they can replace that cable really fast.
Yes.
And isolate the issue, but even then, we can, they can backfeed it, they can feed it different directions.
Correct.
Keep the maximum number of people on.
Correct.
At one time while they're fixing it also, so it's, it's gonna be much...
So we won't have like...
From where you're right now.
So we won't have like the temporary thing I'm sure you saw in the neighborhood?
Correct.
That's been there for a few months.
The giant extension cord?
Yeah, pretty much.
We have one of the green boxes in our backyard, does that mean we got a pretty good chance of seeing that big old thing back there?
You'll see us in your backyard. Promise you. Yes sir.
Guaranteed.
Do you know who, are we all coming?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be there.
So the way that we're doing this, I mean, we, we've said this a couple of different times, the way that we're doing this is...
Sorry.
The way that we're doing this is, uh, really the way, this is the most robust way to do it. If we're gonna get in there, we wanna get in there one time, and this will last, um, I mean, this honestly should last the rest of your lives, so this is, well, unless you're really young, so it would be the rest of my life. David may be... What's that? All right. Um, the next thing we're gonna talk, were there any other questions, concerns right now? I know we got a lot.
This presentation won't be available on the website?
Yes. So I, I'll make sure this, we've created a separate webpage, so I didn't go through our communication plan, but this project has its own website. Um, it'll be in the newsletter, we're gonna use iInfo to communicate with each of you. You'll have his number. We'll, we'll probably hand out some envelopes, so if you wanna send some hate mail, you'll know where to, it'll be pre-adressed. Where to send it.
I'm in Bernie.
Or if, if you can't, you can also send it to me, I mean, you guys see me in the neighborhood all the time, so...
But we really do wanna try, I mean, we, we're, we're really striving to be better communicators about these types of issues, and we, we also know there's gonna be some issues that are gonna come up, there will be problems. Uh, there'll be things that we did not anticipate. I, I love it when I get a call, uh, from a hotel, he's a great, great gentleman, but he always wants to know why I didn't tell him we were gonna cut the water. Well, the main broke. I, I didn't know it was gonna cut. He wants to know why I didn't have advanced notice. Well, if we'd had advanced notice, we would've fixed it before it broke, but, um, in any case, that, those types of things may happen, and, and we just ask for your patience, work through them, but if we fail you in, in communicating, I wanna know about it, because, you know, that is an area But if we fail you in communicating, I want to know about it, because that is an area that the mayor's really challenged staff to do better at, and we are striving to do that, so.
Did we talk at one of the last meetings on this about internet fiber going kind of at the same time?
We thought that that might be a possibility. Unfortunately, in part because of where this is going and how it's going, it wasn't an option. But your memory is good. We did, we did talk about that, that we were gonna explore that option.
So we're not-
And if we can make that happen, we were gonna try and do that, but unfortunately-
Not with this project.
That did not happen.
We've been in contact with different service providers. Everybody knows that Comzoom was purchased by Spectrum Charter Communications almost, just over a year ago. So we're working with them on what their plans are. They have talked about some fairly robust plans. We've looked at some other options, so.
Please let me finish first.
Yeah. That will not happen before October of twenty-four.
Please don't invite them in the neighborhood.
I wanted to say one thing, iInfo, almost weekly, I get updates from the county. If you're in emergency services department, if you're having a high wind here, there's storms, anything else in the county. If you guys aren't on iInfo, you need to be on it. They'll email you and it's absolutely a second, that's not even counted.
I see Sheena staring at me like, you gotta get that fixed.
They know I get, well, no, they know I get the word out too. This morning before I went to work, I got on Nextdoor and put out a reminder. Hey, we're having this meeting this evening, you know, come on out.
Well, I'll be taking and figuring out why the mayor and yours aren't working a bit. Yeah, thank you for that plug. It is on our homepage on our website.
Mine is a system.
If you just type in notification in the search bar, or iInfo in the search bar, but it should be right, there should be a link right on the main page. I saw two hands with questions. There's one over there and one over here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on the east end in the backyard, if there's landscaping back there, do you need to take it out? Do you guys need to take it out? I mean, we bought the house, which is two big beds, with great hurdles, and they're right in the fence, and we have lots.
Right, so I can tell you that that's your decision, but if we take it out, I mean, we're not gonna put it back. It's an easy-
Great hurdle is a curse word in our neighborhood. You can ask Tom.
Really?
Yeah.
Really, I like hearing that.
It costs a lot of our electrical, the root balls.
Yes, sir.
Is there any property tax effect that causes this project?
I can't answer that question. The short answer is no. The question was, is there a property tax impact? It wouldn't be property tax, it'd be rates. Frankly, it'd be utility rates that'd be impacted. Utility rates were already adjusted, as you may recall. The council, we talked about doing a phased approach. We ultimately decided to know, we're just, we knew where we needed to be on our rates. We went ahead and ripped the Band-Aid off and went to that. And currently, there is no design by the city to raise your utility rates. And I don't foresee that need at this time. But that'll be something that, if that were to come up, just like happened in the past, there'll be a lot of communication about it if the city decides. But at this time, we have projected not just this utility improvement, but water and sewer. And there's other utility-related improvements that are also being carried out. And the rates for water and sewer and electric are sufficient to support those projects.
And to be really clear about raising rates, so rates will always go up, because inflation always happens. But this specific project will not impact that, and we're doing everything that we can. Staff has been amazing about finding ways to save money so that we're not, when I heard from one of my neighbors who was speaking earlier years ago, he's like, just be warned, your utility rates are gonna go up. I think it was at that point, they were expecting ten percent a year for five years. And so that hasn't happened, and we've been really good about keeping that low. So this is included, this is one of those projects that is absorbed by the entire city. We try to be careful about how many of these we do, but the impact to your neighborhood specifically was severe enough that we decided that we were gonna do that.
Got another question. You saw how the pads ship sink in-
Yes.
How are we going to improve to where hopefully prevents that as much as possible?
We're gonna use tech stop road based material, so it's some pre-quartered dust. We're gonna pad all that stuff down, so in other words, we'll have hand compactors, and we also have compactors for our mini excavators to pack all that in there and get it as tight as we can. At the end of the day, some shifting might happen, but it's, I tell you, for example, news side divisions, after a rain, we constantly have to go out and reach in and fix them and get them moved up. And we'll do that, we'll get them cleaned up and straightened up. So, but all in all, we should minimize that by using the base and stuff underneath them, underneath the pads.
I assume the box will be raised higher than the ones they are now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, so that pad should be approximately three to four inches above grade. So with that being said, if it has to go higher, then it will be sloped, a gentle slope away from it to keep the water from running, getting into a best of.
All right, any other questions, concerns, anything we missed? I hope the communication has been good for you. Please, there's a sign up sheet back there. Please make sure that you sign up. There's a place for your name, for your email address. Don't forget to sign up for iInfo. A lot of what we're gonna be doing, because not everybody gets the paper, not everybody reads your newsletters. By the way, your newsletters are a great source of information in your utility bill. Not everybody is on social media, not everybody has internet. Pretty much everybody has a cellphone. So with iInfo, you can tell it where to send the information. That will be a critical way to get information across all different things with the city, but especially with this. If you want, put a little I and circle it by your name on there if you need help finding it on the sign up sheet. Just put it on there, and we'll contact you and help you get through it. Just like they have to help me get through it, because apparently I'm not doing it right. I only get an email, and I don't get it on my cellphone, so.
Carl, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And I want to thank all of you for coming and everything. You know, if you have any questions developed, make sure you ask them, you know, you let me know. You know I ask, though. No, thank you guys for coming out.
We have a riveting rest of the meeting that they may want to stay for.
You should hang out for the rest of it, it'll only be another fifteen hours.
I hope not.
Hope not. All right, great, thank you, everybody. The next item is discussion and appropriate action on appointment and contract for a historic preservation officer.
You have a recommendation this winter before the HLC. If you need a reminder of kind of what the HPO does, that is in your packet. Brianna's kind of listed it all for you. She also provided the reasoning why the HPO-
Actually, let's-
You want to take a recess?
Yeah, we're gonna take a recess for, let's call it, three minutes?
At?
At six thirty.
Okay.
Three minutes at six thirty?
Yeah, I was worried at first, but this isn't a first video.
Yes.
Where are you? I didn't see, I couldn't see where you're going. Under this? The barker's up here. The barker right there. Yeah, you definitely see the back there.
More than likely, it's either utilities or right away, because we went out and had things marked. I think on the color of the line, it could've been communication or whatever. I don't know, because I know that we had it done twice. That's part of this project. We did it once, and then we had to go back and do it again. So that's what's on that mark. They shouldn't have the barker on the floor. All they're really is three hundred. Is this the only place they have to pass the water? Yes, they don't let you move it. Yeah, I don't, yeah, they'll be there. They're gonna be here, so they're gonna get rid of the moths. We'll be sitting out, okay?
It seemed like the last three Mondays, though, I've been out in town doing something. It's hard to.
All right, well, we're going to split. We're going out this way.
For the water, we're gonna go. And what they do, the blocks, they go through the door, they knock, you miss home, no one answers. They go look at the heater, they open it up, and if it is spinning, they know someone's at home. So the water's being used, they don't want it set off. So they don't want to talk to water. So they'll just stick, and they'll go around another one, and make a note, so we gotta come back to that one piece. If you are, if they don't see it spinning, but they knock, I think they'll go, I'm trying to remember what they're talking about. I think that's what they do, to swap it, to see if there's water there. It's a great question. It'll look different. What will it look like? I think the guy's gonna be on the other side. They do look different, they gotta do it. The line, it's gonna be, that's one of the things. That'll be, I think that should be part of this process.
Nice. All right, just a quick warning, we're gonna start up here in just a second.
They'll change off the meter. The meter is on a so-called national grid. That's not part of this project, it's not part of the water. It's also part of the water. We get to doing electric, you will sit down at the house, and then hit range of electric.
Right on the opposite side of the meter. Without what the electrician did. We have the jar here below. He put it on the inside of the garage from where the meter is.
No, that's right.
Right, Sheena? We'll get to retire those hamsters after all. We're making progress, making progress now. Oh, yeah.
All right.
Long damage, Flare enough.
Ready? All right, we're gonna call the meeting back to order at six thirty-six. It's a little bit more than three. Thank you. And next item, discussion and appropriate action on appointment and contract for a historic preservation officer.
Yeah, so as I started to mention, Brianna is prepared to kind of pack it for you, she is here. You answer questions you have. This did go before the HLC committee. They kind of took a pause, they heard from both candidates, and they took a month to kind of decide which one they want to go with, and they met again, and they had some discussion and ultimately made the recommendation that they're making in your packet. Which is, do we have the candidates here? We do, so we hadn't met. Yeah.
Thanks, Selena.
So the candidate's being recommended is actually here with us tonight. If you want to ask any questions, you certainly may. But as a reminder, kind of what the HPO does, what the position is, that's in your packet as well. This is something that's required, since we have these historic, they're basically each historic property, that survey, each surveyed property is its own district, if you want to think about it that way. And in order to have those, you have to have an HPO. We haven't really been abiding to that, and they've kind of let us slide for a little bit, but this is, in part, to bring us back to compliance. The way our ordinances are written, the HPO is empowered to make certain decisions. And I know that Phil and I, when we were talking about some of the improvements that we saw downtown, and some of your concerns, some of those things would be reviewed by the HPO, and it wouldn't necessarily go to HLC. The HPO reserves the right to take anything to HLC that they deem, that they want, either want further direction on, et cetera. But all that's outlined in your packet and explained, that's all I have.
Great, do we have questions? We'll start with District One.
So would she be situated with Brianna in that area there?
She's not a, this is not a full-time employee.
Okay, so it's like-
This is a contract employee, so this would only, she would only take up cases on an as-needed basis. It's a little bit like hiring our engineer and others. They don't office here, it's just a professional consultant contract. For the most part, the review would take place at probably your, do you work from home? You lucky dog. Okay, well, anyway, yeah, they'd take, you'd be able to review remotely, if I take the thing, at your office. So most of this would probably be done remotely, but then the HPO does attend the HLC meetings. So anytime there would be an HLC meeting, you would be there to advise the HLC.
So she would be working like the improvements for the master plan for like Houston Square and stuff like that? Would she be brought involved?
Potentially, yeah.
Anything that needs review? So she is not an architect, I believe, correct?
I'm not an architect, but the company does have a licensed architect.
Well, I'm just looking at the historical portion of it.
Well, let's talk briefly about the responsibilities. If you haven't had a chance to read about that, the responsibilities, the reason that we're doing this, having the HPO not just to bring us back into compliance, but it's very specifically to have a very objective standard. And so there are, when you go through like the historic reviews, they have to look at what our ordinance is say, what the Texas ordinance is say for historic preservation, and then they make a recommendation based on that. But I'll let you go to a little bit more information about what an HPO does.
Yeah, so I'll introduce myself. I'm Selena Angel. I work at Workshop. I have a background in architecture, historic preservation, and planning too, so have a little bit, a mix of everything. So what I'm here to do is if there is a homeowner that wants to make a change to their historic property, if they're in the national district or the local district, they'll come and submit an application. I'll review it, come up with recommendations to the HLC. The only time it really goes to HLC, if it's a demolition, if they're trying to demo something that's historic, if they're trying to add on to a historic property, or if they're trying to build something new, like an additional dwelling unit, or a garage, or a storage in the back. And if that's a historic property, that's when that will go to the HLC. But if it's for something that is just changing windows, or painting, and matching the color that's already existing, it is an administrative application that I could approve, and it all goes through Brianna, right?
What kind of turnaround? Is it gonna be the same amount of, you know, workdays to do the review and everything that we currently have?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, it should be the same turnaround, there shouldn't be any new turn on this.
That's all, thank you.
Great, Councilor King?
And the contract would be with your firm that you work for?
Correct.
But it's highlighted that you will be that person.
Yes.
And windows, you know, in the past, and you don't know this, but in the past, there's been a whole lot of concerns of windows that got changed out, because they went to a modern window versus... But if it's a historic window, it has to be replaced with a historic window. But you're saying that wouldn't have to go before the HLC, and you just, you can make that decision in your responsibility? It has to be like and kind?
Yes, so it depends, so if it is a historic window, it has to be replaced with something that looks similar to that historic window and follows the guidelines of the Castroville Historic Guidelines too. So most of the time, yes, I can do an administrative approval on that, but Brianna will, I will always send it to Brianna to review that, yeah.
Share the blame, beautiful.
You can question. You can blame, you can question.
I did want to mention, one of the things that I'm looking forward to is we are, it's still, one of the things you may recall meeting before last was the proposal to remodel the City Hall. And so that's, that project is ongoing. We're in the process of doing kind of our space evaluation this week, meet with the department heads and others that will be in the building to understand what their space requirements are with the architect. But once we, when we get through that process, I envision, you know, leaning on your expertise to look at the windows, the doors. This will, the proposed remodel of City Hall will include an addition, so it'll be going to HLC. It'd be an addition in the rear of the building. It's more than likely gonna have to go before the Texas Historic Commission. So these are all aspects that I think having an HPO will be very advantageous to the city. Someone that consult, can consult with us on these, on that project.
Anything else?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Councilor Dyer?
Yeah, is this in the approved twenty-three budget for contracted services?
No.
When will we get an amendment?
Pretty quickly.
And what are we getting used to pay it?
More, well, we'll amend the budget to pay it, but more than likely, because of our conservative estimates of budgeting, I don't expect this to impact the budget at all, honestly. I think that our revenues are, exceed expenditures by an amount that will greatly exceed whatever this cost is, so I'm not worried about that at all. Next budget cycle, this will be budgeted for, along with a couple other changes that have been effectuated during this calendar year, or this fiscal year.
Thank you.
Effectuated, that sounds very hoity-toity. That have been carried out, that have been, changes that have been made, geez.
So my original concern was, honestly, it is, there are a lot of architectural things that have been missed, that can be missed. So one of my concerns was your lack of architectural experience with that. But as it was explained to me, yours is more of a very cut and dry function, that if it is, if it fits, then it works. I am still very concerned with both City Hall and with other structures about it going through, and I think it would have to be an additional architectural review. If somebody's making major changes, roof lines, windows, anything like that, we need to make sure that we've got that figured out. But for this position specifically, I think that you're very well qualified. You've got great recommendations from our HLC, you really impress- You really impress them, apparently. So nicely done.
Thank you.
All right. So I have a... Do I have a motion to... Where is it? Do I have a motion to approve Selena Angel with Workshop as the contracted historic preservation officer for the city of Castroville?
Also move?
Great.
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Great. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Excited to be... Thank you.
All right. Next item, discussion and appropriate action on authorizing the city administrator to go out for requests for proposals for streets and utility repairs. Is this you again, Scott?
Yes, it is. Well, I mean, technically, I guess everything's fine, but this is a very fast turnaround. At least you may be thinking that. Last meeting, you approved an R... Task order for K-Freeze to prepare engineering plans for streets and utility improvements. The fact of the matter is, that was kind of an oversight. They were already working on that project and realized, we don't really have a task order for this. So we got that approved. You're paying the engineering for that project. These are projects that are in the approved CIP, so just as a reminder, you that Mayor had this question earlier about streets and how we are choosing streets and where we're choosing to do streets, because obviously we have some streets all throughout town that need attention, especially in our historic downtown. The way the streets are being prioritized is the streets that don't have any water or sewer needs underneath them, or are unlikely to have any, that also need repaving, which is pretty much every street anyway. I mean, again, we have no streets that are perfect. Those are being done first, and we've just about exhausted that list. That list, there's still... We did Country Village. We need to do River Bluff. We talked about it tonight. That's been put off. So we still have all the streets from River Bluff that can be done once this project is done, which won't be till October 24 or sometime thereabout. But then once, you know, once we do those, we've done... Once we do this little batch of streets, which is in your RFP, we'll have done pretty much every street that doesn't have water or sewer that might need to be done along with it. We just did the Lafayette project, and you saw that even though we used the pipe-bursting technique, which technically is less invasive, which it is, it still disturbs the street. It's not like it leaves it completely unmarred or untouched. So Lafayette, if you'll notice, is in this list of streets that we're proposing to be redone. And then the utility project that's being proposed is for San Jacinto. So we're proposing both the utility project for San Jacinto and the street rehab that would need to be done following that project. So all that's been lumped together. Again, these are items that are identified in the CIP. The streets... In the CIP, it just says streets, right? And in the water and sewer lines, it basically says annual water line repair, annual sewer line repair. So these specifics, which streets, which water lines, which sewer lines, if we knew them at the time of the CIP, they're in the worksheet pages that were presented. We presented a plan for how to approach this. So the streets especially, we kind of laid those out. That's changed some. Like I said, originally, we thought we'd do River Bluff before doing these. We've switched that around. The water and sewer, we have gone through a process with K-Freeze of evaluating where we need water and sewer and how to... And which to prioritize. The San Jacinto line is being done because it is a very high priority as far as when you look at the number of leaks and the number of issues and what we're trying to fix and maintain. That's one of the reasons why that was selected, is because as we... Again, as we looked at the citywide, that's an area that really needs attention. It's not the only one. Lafayette was the largest... That was the main one, because remember, we didn't have any cutoffs or any ability to... When we had a main leak, it was a real problem. We fixed that. Now we're fixing kind of the second biggest issue, which is San Jacinto, or the lines near there. And then we will continue to prioritize as we have funding to these projects. We do not have, as you know, a limitless amount of funding. There is a CDVG project that is currently being worked through with GrantWorks that will probably target... It has some additional strings attached to it. It needs to be in a primarily low-income area, and so we've targeted an area for that improvement. But it is also a project that's on the list, so we'll be able to knock that out once it's done. So I'm just going to remind you of how these projects came about, but you do have a list in your packet of kind of the areas that will be impacted at the streets and then what this... Excuse me. What the scope of the water and the sewer line projects are. So you see the water line's about 4,000 linear feet of six and eight inch, and the sewer line is 4,300 feet of a little bit less than a 15-inch line. And these will be pipe-burst, similar to what we did in Lafayette. And then we'll have a street chip-seal overlay. And you see the list of streets. And it's a fairly lengthy list. So we'll take these out to bid. We estimated what it's going to cost. We'll see what bids we get back. We certainly hope that we get some competitive bids and that we're able to stay within budget. We've been very fortunate. I think the Country Village project went very well, the streets project did, and the pricing was really good. We had kind of a local guy who's father-in-law lived over there, and he gave us a really, really good price. So we hope we can get that group back to bid this and see how competitive they are.
Remind us where the sewer line improvements are?
It should be in the same area. So this is in the San Jacinto. I fail to recognize, we do have K-Freeze here to answer questions if you have specific engineering-type questions, but don't... Is there a map with this? I don't recall.
No.
I gave you a map. You didn't use my map. Spent a lot of time on that map.
You gave me a map?
Last time.
I didn't receive a map. I'm sorry. I just have the agenda number four. There's not a map in the back.
All right. So what you had was agenda summary, not the rest, but we can send you a map afterwards. Sorry. Okay.
If I may, I can expand on what Scott had communicated. My name is Joel Valdez with K-Freeze and Associates. I'm the engineer on the project. So what we did was, as Scott just described, is we looked at existing water and sewer in the area, identified those areas that need improvement. Based on timing of the project, we did divide the project into two different packages. Package one, which is the one that we're voting on today, would improve... I forgot the actual total linear footage, but it would be Lafayette and some of the areas to south of River Bluff. U.S. Highway, Old Highway 90, is in that corridor, basically to the northwest of the school. Package two would include the area by the river, which would be San Jacinto and Alamo Street. The first package does have some minor sewer repair where we are pipe-bursting. We had the existing sewer CCTV'd, and we identified several sewer segments that were off-joint, so basically the sewer's not flowing correctly through that system. So we plan to pipe-burst those areas, do some minor point repairs to get the sewer working. And then we're going to rehab the sewer manholes. After that project is done, or after that phase is done, we'll go back and chip-seal those projects that have been disturbed. That's package one. Package two is a little bit bigger. It will have significant more water line improvements. And while we've worked with John Gomez and his team to identify areas that have seen a lot of pipe failures, areas that have just been very distressed, we'll work on those areas, as well as sanitary sewer in those areas as well. We did CCTV that area. Again, we saw a lot of areas where we need a pipe burst. So once that project is done, we'll redo the roadway improvements as well. So we have two different packages. Package one is, we'd like to advertise this month, and package two would probably advertise towards the end of the summer. The reason why we divided the two projects out was because we don't want to chip-seal during the colder months, and so we thought we'd delay the project further towards the end of the summer, have... Do the utility improvements in the early spring in '24, do the chip-seal during the hotter months. And then obviously, River Bluff in the far future.
Yeah, that's a whole nother...
That's a whole different animal.
All right. Great. Do I have a motion to approve the city administrator to solicit bids for the FYE-23 street and utility package, number one? Have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Any further questions or discussion?
Yes. At the last meeting, I had asked about the bridge, and this I'm looking at, Geneva to Athens, Ranchero, and Chateau. Because the bridge right there on Geneva, there's potholes and everything galore. And so are we going to chip-seal over the bridge, or...
Correct. So we are going to chip-seal just south of the River Bluff subdivision, and then around that cul-de-sac, but the...
The square.
The square, thank you. And then everything south of that, down Geneva Street, towards the highway.
Okay. And did we find out where the staging of the electrical contract's going to be out of? Because they were looking right there at that end of River Bluff. And I had concerns about that with their heavy equipment and what have you.
No, I don't know where they're staging it. I didn't know that they were looking at that edge either.
Yeah. Well, I said at the last meeting...
I wasn't... Well, yeah, I was out. I listened in, but I ended up... Because when my class ended, when y'all started, there was like a 15-minute period where I missed part of the meeting.
Yeah, they were looking right there at that end of River Bluff to stage the... All the equipment and everything.
Okay.
And so I was having a concern with that heavy equipment.
Yeah, being right next to where we just put the road?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know when... Is that part of Packet One or Packet Two?
That is Packet One. That area is Packet One.
That's why I was asking the question.
So what we can do is we can coordinate with the contractor in Snyder and see if they can relocate to a different location.
Yeah.
You're using the property for the easements?
Yeah.
We don't... We don't... So whenever we go across Geneva, we turn on that street and go around. We never do that.
No, but it's still right there.
So I think her concern is, if I may, is the traffic going from the highway, from... Is basically construction traffic going up Geneva Street to get to their construction yard. Let me talk to them and see if we can find a different location for them.
Okay.
And then we can report back.
Because I hate to waste money.
Have it tear it up.
And have it torn up by heavy equipment.
We still have two city lots over on Washington Street in Athens.
But they still would have to get it up over to River Bluff, because they're going to be working on that end, because that's part of Phase One anyway.
You know, we have a city staffer who has a couple of lots over there.
That's if he can get it out there, because that end always floods.
It is, yeah.
All right. More questions?
Nope, that's all I got.
Great. Anything else?
Yeah.
Please.
Are you finished here?
No, yes, I'm done.
All right. See, you've got roadside ditch cleanup as part of this contract. Is there anything in this contract that's going to do anything to improve stormwater drainage anywhere?
So what we're trying to do here is trying to clean up some of the roadside ditches that have overgrown, that have silted up over time. So when it does flood, silt washes off from the roadway and into the dirt, into the roadside ditch. Our attempt is to not improve conveyance, is just to clean up the ditch. Therefore, we're not having water piling up on the street. One other component, one other item I do want to add is, our intention is not to raise the road, is we want to keep the road at the existing elevation. So...
Is the work that you're going to do going to be done by a contractor?
Correct.
Or by in-house?
No, by the contractor, correct. So he plans to go in there, grate out the ditches, clean out any culverts that are silted up, so that will improve some conveyance, but it's not a true drainage project where we have a true outfall for this water to run into. So we're going to make the situation better, but it's not going to be a true drainage project. The reason why we picked these roadways, as Scott had mentioned earlier, is we did not overlap these projects with the major drainage projects that were identified in the master plan. Those projects will come at a later date based on funding and grants. So that's a project down the road. So we picked these projects to make sure we didn't do double work down in the future.
We have $20 million worth of drainage projects and no money.
Correct.
That you've already documented in previous reports.
Correct. K-Freeze did the master plan study, correct.
We're going to talk about that at the May 9 meeting.
Yep.
About a limited scope project for the four blocks between Athens, Algiers, London, I don't know, that area.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great. Were you part of that meeting, too?
Yes, sir.
I should have said you come up here and talk first.
No, you're doing a good job. You're doing a good job. You're doing a good job.
Well, I... We caught the contract. That's what you were just trying to tell me, is the contractor's outside, so we're talking about other options. I think we have at least a couple other options for his staging area. I told him there's this field right across on River Trail next to this house.
And I'll let Loki out.
Yeah. No, he needs a lot of space. He needs at least an acre or two.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Next item, actually, I'm going to open this back up. Discussion on UDO process and expected outcome. So I did want to talk about this. We're going to talk more about this on May 9. And Councilman Dyer had some questions about that. So I was talking... I'm in the Hill Country Alliance Leadership Summit. It's a nine-month process that we're going through with a bunch of other mayors and city council people, county judges, some water board members. And I was talking to the mayor of Banderas last week when we were in San Marcos, and she was saying that they had finished up their UDO process, and I was asking her about her experience with that. And I did that because I wanted to make sure... I've been talking to a few different... A few different mayors about what their experience was after they went through that. So just to be clear, I wrote this down. So what a Uniform Development Ordinance, a UDO, is a tool that cities can use to regulate land reuse and develop it in a more comprehensive and coordinated manner. So it typically replaces a patchwork of outdated zoning codes and regulations with a unified set of standards that reflect the city's vision and goals for development. By adopting the UDO, there are four primary things. So one is encourage more sustainable, walkable, and mixed-use development patterns that are consistent with the city's goals and objectives. Streamline the development review process by providing clear and predictable standards and procedures. Promote the use of best practices in design and development, such as green infrastructure, affordable housing, underground utilities, high-speed internet, some of the other things that we've been talking about. And enhance the quality of life for residents by creating a more attractive, livable, and resilient neighborhood. So the idea behind the UDO is we take the codes that we already have, that are kind of spread all over the place, they're hard to understand, they're hard to enforce, and they don't cover some of the key elements, which we'll be talking about on May 9. So that's the reason we go through this. And I was going to have the mayor of Banderas come in and talk to you about that during this meeting. She unfortunately was not able to make it, but she will probably either record something and give it to us. Just, I wanted you to get a chance of what other people have experienced as they've gone through this and the benefits that they've experienced. What she had talked about was how through this process, it was a lot easier for the new development. They had some small redevelopments on infill properties, and she said it was really kind of amazing how what they had envisioned was actually coming to fruition, because they had explained it and described it and defined it actually in their code. And so she was very, very happy with that outcome. But I wanted her to give you her insight of that and explain to you what she's been going through with that. So I just wanted to kind of briefly introduce that. And there's gonna be a lot more in the, in the next coming meetings that we'll be talking about that.
Um, I will say that I miss... Our intention was bringing RFP back for the UDO, and Brianna's done a lot of prep to do that. But then I, I got my signals crossed. I thought that because we were doing this DNA analysis, that that kind of needed, we needed to wait and do the UDO later because the DNA will inform the UDO. And that, that part of it's true. I had that part right. But the fact of the matter is, we could go ahead and engage the RFP process. Go out for, for the UDO RFP, if the city council's ready to do that. And then engage the, the group that will do that, um, UDO process while we're doing it at this, you know, simultaneous to the DNA. So I, I believe, we're gonna look at, the mayor and I will look at the May ninth agenda. I'm a little concerned at the length of it and the fact that you are already gonna have had a long day as part of that workshop. So I, I, we need to look carefully at what all we wanna put on that agenda. But that's something that we could bring back on the ninth, as early as the ninth if we wanted to do that.
That's the swearing-in meeting, right?
Yes.
Do we start again?
Yeah, we start at noon.
Yeah, I know.
And it might be a swearing-at meeting by the end of it.
We will feed you. We may provide beverages between meetings. I don't know.
Okay. Great. So we will continue to work on that and see where we can get with that.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It seemed like we don't have, uh, a plan, schedule, and budget for the UDO. And yet, we're talking about every meeting, we're spending more money getting ready to do parts. And I think we need, before we get totally committed down this road, we need to define... How long is it gonna take? You told me the other, in one of the previous meetings, could be two, three years before we get this done. You didn't say definitively, you said could take a long time.
Twenty-four months is what I would expect.
A year to two years, yeah.
So it seems like we oughta, we oughta be able to identify the major events and some kind of a preliminary schedule, and then put some cost around it so we can vote on the money before we start.
Agreed.
Yep, agreed. So what we'll, uh, what we'll come back with on the ninth is definitely it'll be a full scope.
Or after. I don't know if you want to do it the ninth or not.
We'll at least present...
You do?
Yeah, we'll at least present, I wanna have the scope, a general scope available for you so that it's more understandable what all is gonna be included in that. Based on the estimates that I've seen, depending on how much of that... I, I think that we can present the entire scope and then a recommendation if we wanna narrow that scope slightly just for faster, either reduced, uh, costs now or faster implementation. But it'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four hundred thousand dollars, I would imagine, based on what I've heard from other cities. So that's what we should be prepared for. And this is something that it's fairly standard. A complete overhaul doesn't have to happen that often. Just because these have not been kept up and unified and collaborated on the individual because there's been a lot of piecework, I think that this, this is why we're looking at spending so much on this initial one. And then after that, what we would expect out of whomever puts this together is to help us devise a plan for regular updates so that it's then maintenance instead of these big, huge, massive expenses. So we will come back at least with that, that scope for discussion. If we're ready for a decision, then I don't know that we will be. I think that I'd rather just talk it over and that way people have a plenty of time to ask questions and get their concerns out. Does that work for you?
My only concern is it's gotta appear in the budget next year. I mean, we gotta start, we gotta start putting in places in, in the budget and making sure that we have the money for whatever we decide we're gonna do at the time we want to do it. I, I'm not opposed to the DDO, I'm just wanting to see the plan.
Yep, totally agree.
And the cost.
Yeah, I'll talk about funding at the next meeting. I know that part of it's gonna come... Well, it will be budgeted as one of the planning efforts in the CIP. That's, that's what I would recommend, anyway. And some of that money will come from other planning efforts that, um, we funded but didn't need the funding for. So the, the main example of that is the GIS. I had put, plugged in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the GIS work in the original CIP, and, and we spent twenty-five. Now, we're still spending minor amounts, but it's, we're not gonna get anywhere close to that. So that will be where some of that money comes from. But it really kind of depends on how big the effort is, the scope is. And I think, Councilman Dyer, you're, you're on point again. I mean, we need to kind of scope it out, et cetera. So we will try to do that for the next meeting.
Cool. Any other discussion on that? We'll keep on digging into this. I know that we've been talking a lot about it without any kind of substance, so I, I feel like we're getting close to where we can actually provide some substance behind that. Uh, next item is discussion and appropriate action on revising the city's complaint-based code enforcement policy and a briefing from city attorney on process on legal enforcement.
And for this, I know that Cindy, Cindy, you had prepared some comments, correct?
Yes, and I can make it very brief, and so I don't know if you want me to go first.
Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Are you ready for her report?
Absolutely.
Would you like to go? I don't really have anything. So I think, I think it'd be best for you to give your report and input, and then we'll see where the council takes it from there.
Um, so I know we discussed this at the last meeting, and I had a couple of council members ask me, you know, what's the difference between, um, you know, running a regular code compliance, code enforcement program, and a complaint-based program? And then what's the difference between enforcement through municipal court and other enforcement mechanisms? So the down and dirty on this is that I do not know of any good code enforcement program that, that isn't at least partially based or isn't partially complaint-driven, right? Because that, that's frequently how code officers are, are notified of, you know, hey, you need to go check out a particular property. And I know Scott was looking for some guidance, saying overall, what type of program do y'all do, you don't want the city to run? And so I, I think currently, you kind of have a half-and-half system, which is pretty much how everybody does it. Um, you've got the code officer actively, you know, reviewing and, and, you know, making contacts, you know, throughout the day, you know, during their regular shift, looking for things as they, you know, go about their regular business. And then you've got complaint-driven. Now, whether that is a neighbor, you know, saying, you know, calling up the city hall and saying, ah, have you seen this place, you know, next door to me? Or, you know, patrol officer, you know, PD saying, you know, we were out and about the other night or the other day, and we saw this, you know, go check it out, or, you know, any other city staff. So that's complaint-driven, and it doesn't matter who the complainant is, but, but that's quote complaint-driven. And so most programs, like I said, it's, it's equal parts. There are active measures taken by the city staff assigned to code compliance and code enforcement, and then whatever comes in, it needs to be checked out. And then, once you have established, you know, a case, you know, or a property that is in violation of the code, you know, then the code officer takes certain, certain measures and certain steps. So those steps can be, you know, we knock-knock, let me visit with you, replace the door hanger. And then from there, you know, there's that kind of escalating process there. And then there's the process where you must give the official notices. And so within the code of ordinances, um, you know, if you're, whatever type of code that you are enforcing, you must give those notices as it's set out in the city's code of ordinances. So junk vehicle, for instance. Junk vehicle, to enforce those, it says you have to give a notice, you have to give the property owner or the owner of the vehicle ten days. And on the eleventh day, if abatement hasn't occurred voluntarily, then you take those next measures. And then, you know, from there, you know, this, that decision gets made is do we send that through an administrative process or do, do we send that through municipal court or kind of a hybrid measure? And so, uh, so that's the sticking point, is that you have to make sure that your processes upfront are done accurately and completely before you can move on to that next enforcement process. Next example, international, uh, international codes. So the city's adopted various versions of international codes for building, for property maintenance and such. So those codes were absolutely require, you know, that those notice provisions go out before you can consider any type of enforcement. And then, you know, once you get through that piece, then the next key issue is how do we want to enforce this? So for probably ninety-five percent of your cases, you can file a complaint in municipal court, and your municipal court prosecutor's gonna pick those up, and they're gonna treat that, those cases and those, those charges just like they would a traffic citation. Person comes in, did you obey? Yay or nay? Right, if you did obey, but just FYI, you know, you were in violation at this particular point in time, and I can prove that. So, you know, the judge is going to order, or the prosecutor's gonna plead deal saying, you know, I'm gonna give you thirty days to comply. And at the end of thirty days, if you haven't complied, then we're gonna assess the full fine and penalty and court cost against you. The key issue with that, though, is that it doesn't gain you compliance. It's not a guaranteed compliance. Again, most of the persons that you're going to deal with, when they come into municipal court, realize that they've incited, you know, that it is a violation, they're gonna comply. You might have to work with them a little bit, but they will comply. And then you've got that small percentage of, it doesn't matter what you do to them, they are not going to comply unless you make them. And that's where the sticking point comes in. Because in order to quote make them, you must actually file a civil lawsuit against a property owner within the city, you know, who owns property within the city of Castroville. And that is completely a policy decision of the council. And before a case can, can move forward to that, to that level, one of two things has to have happened. You either have already needed to have identified, you know, two or three properties and said, hey, you know, we're gonna give authority to the city administrator to ensure that those processes get worked. And if those processes don't get worked, then give, you know, the appropriate notice to either the city attorney team or the prosecution team, hey, continue on, file that lawsuit, and let's get going. Or two, say, okay, note that we wanna see these on an individual basis, and we want to be able to see exactly what you did and track that process. Bring that decision back to council, and council will review it. And if we, council makes that determination, yes, y'all done everything you could, who tried X, Y, and Z, proceed on. And again, that would be city prosecution team or city attorney team. But, but the big issue is, for that small percentage of people, not every council, um, has good feelings about, you know, filing a lawsuit against, you know, a property. And so those are, you know, those decisions get made on an individual basis, you know, based on, you know, the severity of the violations. Frequently, if you have, um, a very, you know, or several violations going on in our property, frequently it will be an outcome. It is somebody that owns the property, they've got somebody else, you know, they've rented it out to somebody else, they're leasing it out, and they're just maybe, and they're just not aware. That, that's been my experience. Normally, it is not, you know, homegrown person that, that has owned the property to get to that level. So the reason that it is absolutely incumbent that council even grants that authority or council reviews the cases, you know, individually, is that from time to time, you will have properties where it is going to be, you know, someone within the community, and they have very valid reasons why they cannot give the property to compliance. And so then, the, you know, the city council as a whole has to give that authority for other abatement measures to take place. For instance, you may have an elderly person that no longer has family, you know, nearby or in state that's available to come and help them. Where that person, you know, doesn't have the means with which to, um, hire people who can help you gain compliance. And so that may be a situation where, you know, the, the city council needs to give a directive that says, staff, go meet, figure out what that plan looks like. See if we can gain, you know, that, um, that voluntary consent for the city to come in and do just enough to get a property into some form of compliance and allow that lien to recoup those costs to be placed, you know, on the property. And so there's, there's different tracks that, that have to go. But ultimately, for that small percentage where going through municipal court doesn't work, council has to make that decision, it's like, what do you, what directive do you want to take? And frequently, your prosecutor, and that's currently Mr. Russian, you know, he has the ability to, to bring these cases, you know, to do the same thing that the city attorney teams do. And so if that's the case, you know, we just step back and get our prosecutor to do them because they may have already initiated a case in municipal court, they've got the background, they have all the info. It's easier for them to continue on, just let term fly, you know, and, and move off in a different direction. Sometimes, though, the prosecutor will say, I just don't have the, the time or ability to give that case that kind of attention, please. City attorney, proceed on. So either way, it would be one of your, your legal councils, you know, taking those actions. And so that's, that's the big thing. This is not a court of, municipal, Castroville Municipal Court is not a municipal court of record, so it, it, with the rare exception for junk vehicle abatement, it does have the authority to order an abatement of a property. So, you know, injunction that says you obey and get your property cleaned up within one week's time, and if you don't, the city's gonna come in and do it, and they're gonna charge you. And, you know, we're gonna assess those deeds.
So you can't...
So municipal court, again, like I said, except for the, the, the only authority that's actually statutorily granted is junk vehicle abatement. And that's, you know, that's authority granted to the cities from the state for junk vehicle abatement, but not for abatement of any other type of nuisance conditions or ordinance violations. Now, the issue with junk vehicle abatement is, yes, you can file on it, yes, the court can, municipal court can order abatement, and it can assess that fine and court cost. The problem is, is that the abatement order is issued to the property owner. And if the property owner doesn't obey, you're back to square one, which is I gotta get an injunction to get on, you know, or I gotta get something to get on the property to make that abatement.
So our junkyard property that has warrants out for their arrest and everything is one of those exceptions, I take it?
From the information that I've been provided in review, I would say, yes, it is. It is warrant is issued, and that case is stuck, right? Because that's the municipal court, that's the criminal procedure. It's that you can't proceed on, and nothing else can be done until that person is brought into court to face execution and make a judgment.
Okay.
So, so it sits there and it's stuck, and, and nothing else happens, happens until such time. And secondarily to that, assuming that warrant gets out there, gets issued, person's brought in. The best case scenario is that it is a successful, successful prosecution, and the person's found guilty of each and every violation in order to pay that fine and court cost.
Right.
They've paid the fine and court cost, but it has, the property's not abated.
Now, they have a bunch of broken-down vehicles. So would that fall underneath the vehicle abatement thing?
So potentially each and every vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
You know, if it, if it meets the definition of a junk vehicle, each and every vehicle is a separate violation, and it can be ordered to abate it, but again, we've gotta, we've gotta get it defended into court.
Yeah, that's the hard part right now.
Where, uh, civil processes, let's say we take it all the way to civil processes, and we, you know, show, you know, either your legal team shows up to court and says, oh, and Judge, FYI, you know, this person was legally and correctly served, and you're free for that service, and we're seeking a default order. Grant us that order for us to do what we need to do to clean that up. And so that, that's the big difference. And potentially also you can give administrative fees and whatnot on suicide.
Okay.
So those are the, should be differences. In municipal court, if they don't show up, we stop, because it's a criminal proceeding.
Right.
And then in civil, there's potential for default orders intentional and another one.
So on these individual items, Scott, who is on point to get them resolved? Like if, so Councilman Martinez has this issue, this specific issue that's affecting her district. Who does she work with to make sure that action is being taken?
Well, she, the answer's always work with me. I mean, that's, that's the first answer. But as far as trying to follow up on this, it has been a little bit of a nightmare. It looks like we are starting the process of an injunction on that, on that property. So you just heard Cindy speak to what that looks like. So that's what, that's where that is. Apparently, at least one of the people that live there has moved. So that's also part of the issue. But again, as you heard the attorney speak to it, you know, it's really the owner of the property that's ultimately responsible for that, so that's where that stands. But no, it's, it's, the, the issue is, and I hope this is what we've been trying to convey, is that it's just not a simple process, and it's not something that, it doesn't matter how loud the person yells and how many times the neighbor calls and how frustrated people get. There is a court process, it's a legal process, and it's gonna take. I mean, everybody, every probably knows, everyone probably knows someone who knows someone that was involved in a legal case that took three or four years. I know Phil mentioned the other day, he's been retired for a little while. He's still, hasn't taken any new cases for two years? But you're still following up on stuff that you had that was still open. And that's just, that's just the nature of the beast, unfortunately. But, um, yeah, follow me, and then, and we will do our best to, to keep you updated on, on where it stands. But that's, the latest and greatest on that is that we're, the judge is in the process of providing an injunction.
Okay.
So when did we go to a complaint-based? Because in talking to, uh, former Mayor Lee, he was saying, when, when did this happen? Because he was not aware of that.
No, I'm not aware of when we did it. I didn't, I never knew we switched.
I thought Carl was going around.
She, she probably, it's a little bit, again, it's a little bit of a mix. I think she does a little bit of both. Deborah has a comment.
No, I was just gonna say, it's always been fifty-fifty, I guess you'd say, or... I was serious when that county, when Carl got hired. Um, and so I wanna say that it was always complaint-based. It was just that there was such a backlog of people, complaints that were coming to the system that nobody was taking care of. So whenever she got hired on, they came to city council, and y'all were like, well, we need to take care of all these issues that we already have in town. So we're not gonna go out and start just going down streets, giving people citations. We're gonna start with these things that have been issues for a while, work through those things, and then that's how it kind of went out.
Well, and ultimately, that's again why this is coming before you, because whatever the perception was of Mayor Lee as your administrator, I believe that we've been acting under a complaint-based, or at least a quasi-complaint-based system. And I think the, um, the only modification, minor modification I might say to what Cindy shared was that, is that in my experience, she's absolutely right, cities do a combination of both. But, uh, in my experience, some cities... But in my experience, some cities have pet peeves that they want you to go clean up. And whether that's brush that's been out there too long, or falling down fences, or abandoned vehicles in the backyard, or structures that are substandard that need to be torn down. Every, like, again, each community has its kind of pet peeve that they say, we don't really care whether it's someone's complaint, but we really want these things cleaned up. And that's really kind of what I was seeking from you all, is to better understand, I mean, just really just kind of understand, what is your level of satisfaction with the service that's being provided now, and what changes we'd like to see made? You know, beyond what we've talked about before, again, there's going to be some cases that result in long legal discussions. That aside, which we've just kind of belabored, are there any changes you'd like to see made to code enforcement? Or code compliance is what I'm trying to shift our thinking towards. Is there any changes to coding points in how it's being done now that you would like to see? Are there any pet peeves or issues that council would really like to see rectified? Because you have ordinances, and there are definitely violations of those ordinances. But we kind of, as staff, we aren't imposing, we aren't trying to go out and clean up all those necessarily because some of it's been there for decades.
And I don't know that we can completely resolve it here, but let's start a discussion on this. We'll start, I'm sorry, you have?
No, I was going to say, when he's talking about the complaint, originally, it was through the police department. And so it basically was a complaint, or they would go out in the junk vehicles because they were the ones that could do the tickets. And so, and then when we moved forward and was able to get a code compliance officer, you know, it was a combination, as far as I know. Because if anyone calls in and it is a complaint, they're going to go check on that first, of course, unless they see something that's in their daily routine.
Yeah, I don't want you to think that our officer's not doing anything. She tours, she does make the rounds. You see her out when she's here. She actually lost her mother and is at home dealing with that right now. But she's out and about and looking at certain code violations. But I want to know, is what we've been doing for the last two years acceptable? Or do we need to make some changes to it? Now would be a good time to ask a few questions.
I'm going to start with District Five on this one.
Well, I don't think we should pass ordinances if we're not going to enforce them. That doesn't make any sense. So I believe we have to do a hybrid approach. We have to do both. I mean, when somebody calls and makes a complaint, we have an obligation to respond. If the code enforcement officer or a police department officer sees a violation, then we should take appropriate action. I don't have a problem with saying we should do both. We should never exclude either one of them, I don't think.
Are there any that you have seen especially prevalent violations that are not being addressed? And this will be the same.
In my district, we have a lot of junk cars that have been there for years, and they never moved.
So junk cars is one?
That's one of the ones that I think is the most visible. And that's probably the most prevalent one, but I'm not privy to any others.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Sounds to me like identification's not the issue, being able to flush it.
I think it's both. I mean, if there's anything that you've seen where we're kind of falling down on it?
Well, we've heard about the one denied under the President's mind to it. And that's our utilities. Well, not, we're allowing things to grow and build on. So maybe that's something we really pay attention to. I don't know how much it's going to cost us, extra foot system to buy, but trees have to be taken out, and sheds torn down, and understand that. Fences probably weren't supposed to be across those utilities to begin with. When they're taken down fences, I know in my case, it's not supposed to be.
I think normally you can have a fence.
Well, they're taking the fence down for the being intact.
Well, I understand that, but yeah. But I mean, those easements, even though they weren't specified as alleyways, that's basically what they're supposed to be. Really, you can have grass and stuff growing up, and all that David Bar Street, that whole thing just spits.
As long as there's access, like in our old place in San Antonio, they had like specific, because it was all rear hour, and they had specific, like down wherever you got the lines, they were removable handles.
Well, a couple of us did that. We actually have some rock fences built. There's trees growing back there. You know, I think we learned about there's swimming pools, and stuff. So protecting our utilities, I mean, that'd have to be key as far as code enforcement.
So easements, utility and drainage, especially?
Yeah, I think our drainage agents too.
Anything else? Councilman Key?
For, I guess relating to the same discussion, I'm still not a hundred percent clear as far as forward. So basically, we have the example that Councilperson mentioned. So the next step there would be for council to authorize the city administrator to move forward with a civil lawsuit against the individuals. And then if it was found to be, we win. I guess the first thing is, we ask our attorneys, how solid are we to win this? And if we win, then we can recoup the expenses for the lawsuit. And the outcome of that is you then condemn the property and sell it at auction, recover money, or what's that whole process?
It's a great question.
Yeah, it is. Because I will tell you, it is expensive to have to clean up other people's properties. And so there are the legal fees to actually do it, you know, to take it through the process. And then there are the fees that it costs the city to actually abate the property. Now, sometimes the abatement is, you know, maybe we're not interested in abating the accident building, it's a particular case. Maybe it's just the issue of hallmarks and cars, and getting a dumpster or two, and throwing everything in, clean up the property, and we're done with it. So not as expensive. And that, you know, once those vehicles are declared jack vehicles, and they go off, they're an auction, you do whatever with them. And the city can keep those fees, or whatever it will gain from the destruction of those vehicles, you know, to offset costs. The issue becomes, are we abating homesteaded properties? Because that changes everything. So if it is a property that is listed as a homesteaded property, while you can gain the lien on it, then you have to go through the process to abstract the lien and then see, is there any other property that we can attach to in order for the city to be able to foreclose on and gain, sell off the property to gain this money back in payment or?
Well, I think in my experience, to say that you win a lawsuit is always, I feel like, a misnumber. I don't think anybody ever really wins. And in these particular cases, generally speaking, there is no recouping of your money. You can go through processes of establishing liens, stuff like that. But a lot of times, depending on the nature of the home and those involved, there may be other lien holders that take precedent. Very seldom does the city actually end up recouping its funds. What you end up with is an improved neighborhood. I mean, ultimately, the role of code compliance is to seek compliance, to seek abatement, and to seek, you know, people adhering to whatever the local ordinance is, whatever the community as a whole has decided, this is what we value, and how we want people to live and work, et cetera. So you want to seek abatement. That's your main goal. So really, I mean, and I know, she'll give you the legal answer. I'm just going to give you the practical answer. The practical answer is you get abatement, and that's what you're really trying to, the outcome you're trying to achieve through the whole process.
And by having a lien, if the property is ever sold, you would have a lien against it.
Yeah, but like.
And has the first right of its lien.
And depending on how it's sold, like if it's sold by the county because of tax collection, which in my experience, that's where the majority, when you end up with this bad of a property that ends up with a lien against it, many times, it ends up going to tax delinquency, then it gets sold by the county, and then the lien holders are satisfied in order, and the cities don't get any.
But something's happening now. The, you know, if you have a lien, you have, usually it's every three years, or not?
Yeah, is every ten?
It's every ten years.
We've had one in probably.
So before nuisance abatement, you get two ten-year terms, so all total twenty years. But it does require careful repartee on the city's part to ensure that you don't get past that ten-year mark.
Another reason why cities probably don't get paid.
We've had one. It was probably 2016 or so that we filed. It was on a property that was near here. It happened to be, I think, we went in and cleaned it up, mowing and cleaning the property up. We put a lien on it, and then the, I believe the owner either passed in when they sold the property, we recouped our money. It wasn't a huge amount, but it can be costly. That was a few thousand.
Now, did we do that through the county courts or through our municipal?
They went in and, I want to say it had to be the county, or we went in and, when we cleaned the property up and determined it was condemned. Yes, we filed it with the county.
So we first, but we had to get a court order to allow us to abate it first?
No, not necessarily, not necessarily. So there are some, you know, depending on what you're trying to afford, the bigger the problem is, the more likely that you will need a court order. So if we're talking junk vehicles, we've got some processes there that should get on and get out relatively simple and get the junk vehicle abated. If we're talking high weeds and grass, that's a separate issue. We have state authority that says, once it gets to a certain point over whatever, and I don't know, I can't remember what it says, but once it gets to that point where it reaches, you know, the emergency level where it needs to be abated, city has that authority to go in, abate, pile, and you don't need no court action required on it. So it's just depending on, you know, what are you trying to abate? And again, the bigger the issue, the more code violations, the more likely that you will need some sort of court intervention.
And the high weeds and everything, that's a health and safety issue. And basically, just trash on a property, those are health and safety issues that you're abating those. So the city could go in there, basically give notice, people go in there, nuisance abated, we file a lien against it. That sometimes alone will jog people. Also, people don't like hit lawsuits. So the fact that you file a lawsuit, if that was the next step we took, that might correct itself anyway. But we could also go in there and abate vehicles through the municipal, so that way we could legally go on there, take the vehicle, and then sell it at auction. And at least we're abating property. Because one of the biggest complaints I have is, you know, Chris, county judge, you know, just right outside of town, they went in there and cleaned up and abated it. But why can't the city do that? Because they see these junk vehicles, they see these high weeds, they see these.
I wish they would have baited that one right by the hotel. I wish they would have baited that one right as you come into town.
Well, I think if that's on the county property.
It is on the property, and they've never touched it.
Then I think that's what we need. I know the guy in the county we could talk to about that. We'd all do, and I think he would take that on, but he probably doesn't realize that we have an issue with it.
Do we have an issue with it?
Mm-hmm. I used to turn them in for animals that they would chain in our animal control office, we'd go talk to them because it was so bad.
But I mean, I'm asking, do we as a council, does the council have an issue with that property?
Is this one of the properties that people are? I know, first off, I'm not sure which property we're talking about.
It's the one right there on the corner.
Before you get to the bridge?
No, past the, yeah, if you're coming from Honda this way, it's on your left.
You're sitting at the line.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, right there on the corner?
Yes.
Yeah, across the street from the hotel.
Yeah.
I figured that property's worth half a million dollars.
I don't know. I just know it looks terrible. But again, I mean, that's the outside of our jurisdiction.
Right, so that would be one thing. I guess, so right now, the path forward is, if, like this example that we're talking about, for the, to abate the property, we could go on there and abate it, file a lien against the property, and then people see we're doing something. And then also removable vehicles the same way.
Is that a?
And you don't have to sue to do those.
Right, right. And normally, for a code breakdown, is that, and then again, this is just all anecdotal, you know, from what I see in the places, is that, we just all inherently know, you don't go on somebody else's property and start doing the things and start removing things. And so one of the key barriers to break is that, one, you get your code officer trained, which the city has gone through the process of giving their code officers a training. And then, two, you know, taking one or two cases where we literally hold hands as we walk through the process, because you, until you cross that threshold hurdle of, the process works if you follow all the correct codes and procedures, if you follow area correctly. Assuming, let's assume worst case scenario, worst case scenario, how are you? Junk vehicle, you gave notice, the notice period of time, followed procedures to abate, appeal period of time. Person is upset, and at the end, they find out you took my property when I worked in junk vehicle, as everybody else does it, and they sue the city. And they say, you took my property, and you owe me X number of dollars. That falls under your insurance coverage, because they're saying you damaged me. You took, you took my billion dollars. When you go through, Michelle, wait a minute, that was a nuisance vehicle. They were noticed, the city followed every procedure of the legal procedure, and then they abated, gains X, you know, that's who gets dismissed. And so it's just getting everybody past that hurdle of what happens if? And the if does happen pretty frequently, because people get very angry about, you know, the city coming in and messing with their business. But the issue is, is I cannot have the nuisance in the first place, we wouldn't be messing with their business.
So on this particular case, where the judge is working through the process of an injunction, that is in order to issue a warrant? Or the warrant's already been issued, that's to act on a warrant?
So I'm not so familiar exactly, you know, what action has been taken since the last time I was here. So if your prosecutor has filed the necessary paperwork to get an injunction, then he's seeking that order that says, let us own that property, let us abate this property.
And is that the criminal process? Or is that the civil process?
So normally, injunction is civil process, unless what's being sought is, you know, additional authority to enforce a junk vehicle.
Yeah, this property, I nicknamed Junkyard, literally is. The people moved in, everything was hunky-dory. They had their own little construction business that they were running out of their no permit. So Carl, you know, did the notification, educating type thing. Well, then it expanded, and a whole bunch of broken down vehicles, they pushed into this yard, and they started working on them and rebuilding them and fixing them. So oil, transmission fluid, all of that, all over the ground and what have you. And they're bringing those vehicles down to Mexico to sell. So they're running that little business out of there. And it's just been escalating and escalating. Then they have construction material just dating down there. They put an illegal fence up with the type of metal fence that sideways you see on a junkyard. They put that up. And then, so Carl has been going back to them constantly with every new thing. And it got up to the point where they said, all right, we're taking you to court. Well, the people asked for a new court date. They, the people asked for a new court date, and they changed it to that date. They no-showed, has made no effort to rectify this. So that's why we're at this point. And it's awful. I mean, the poor people that live around them, there was a house for sale behind them. It impacted them, because who's going to want to buy a house with a junkyard next door? So it's been one that the city has been taking all the steps, dot N, I, and crossing the T to make sure we have a.
It is a process. It is an absolute process.
It is.
It is, you can be careful for those that are actually working the case.
It is, and I mean, the neighbors called me up, and I let them know, hey, the city's working it. It's in the court's hands. Okay, good, good, so something's being worked. Because it's a nightmare. Just drive down Geneva towards River Bluff there, you can't miss it.
So we were going, go ahead, Phil.
So, Dean, a question for you is, the city is moving forward actively, you know, I'm trying to think that up.
Oh, yeah, we haven't really ever let off the gas. I'm going all the time. The question the mayor posed to you was?
Yes, after I got that question, I was going to tell you.
Okay.
The second thing, basically, like Herb said, if junk, I always, I don't want to be embarrassed by people from out of town visiting our city. And when you're driving down the street, you see junkyards, junk cars in the front or the backyard. You see grass is two feet high under the car, so you know the car's been there for a long time. You see nuisance yard, there's piled up. So the first thing, you try to be, you know, you go talk, like Carl talked about, see if it's an area with a person. You know, here, last year, you know, the last two years, the May cleanup, she's helped people like that that had a need, and I think that's good. You know, here, last year, you know, the last two years, the May cleanup, she's helped people like that that had a need, and I think that's good. But in instances where that's not it, it just, people are, you know, I think the city does need to be proactive in abating these properties, because it, it does look unfavorable on the city.
Yeah, I think there's one on, like, there's one with a van in the backyard on Mexico, and it looks like he took some fence panels and just kind of laid them up against it, but you can see, it's like, it's kind of like, you know, the, the dog that's wearing the ghost outfit, and you tell it, you know, it's, it's like, okay, I can see there's a van, and there's grass two feet tall, and that's been there for a long time. I'm sure it meets every definition of a junk vehicle, and it's not really, I mean, one of the things I believe in the code, now, now, all of this has a, also caveat, Cindy, and that is that the great state of Texas, um, is, is looking at a, at a, what do they call it? A, a super preemptive bill to preempt cities from doing almost anything that the state doesn't say they can do. And so, uh, that would impact things like, it, it, it very, very could, if the state has, anywhere a state has nuisance laws or vegetation laws or anything of that nature, this super preemptive bill, uh, very well could impact that. So, in other words, our ability to, to enforce, if, if the state's law says your grass can't be higher than two feet, uh, then, um, and we have one that said it can't be higher than a foot, well, then it goes to two feet. I mean, that's my understanding of what they're kind of looking at. So, that could, all of this could change depending on how this legislative session goes. And that bill is, I think, one of the things that, um, has a pretty strong support.
Well, again, you can add to my list, I also know right down the street, there were, there were trailers parked in people's yards that people are living in, and travel trailers. And also, one property elsewhere, there's a portable building with a trailer next to it, and people are living in it. And so, those are things that I don't think we should allow any court to do.
They're not supposed to.
Right.
And yet, we just turn our blind eye to it, and I think that's unfair.
So, people living in trailers, people living in portable buildings, uh, junk vehicles, and enforcement of our easements. That's the running list right now.
But I don't think, you know, like, for instance, someone was complaining the other day that we allow all this, but we allowed a whole pile of wood out there, you know, two days early, and it wasn't, I, I didn't see the pile, it was just a small island, I didn't, you know, enforce it.
Well, I will tell you, since you bring that up, one of the frustrating things is we just had brush cleanup, and there are people that are already putting new brush out.
Yeah.
Four, four weeks? Eight weeks?
Eight weeks, because the next one is?
Is bulk.
Bulk, no.
Yeah. And it's very frustrating, because, I mean, you can't claim ignorance, guys. Like, we literally just came through and picked everything up, and now they're sticking out another pile.
Well, like, for the storm that just went through, it blew over some trees in my backyard, because the soil is just all jacked up and it's blown over trees. So, the responding.
There's a couple of things. I know that you can make, uh, you can make a call to waste management to do special pickups, they'll do that. I don't, I don't even know if there's a charge depending on what it is they're picking up. So, that's number one. Number two, yeah, again, we've instructed people, okay, we'll cut it up and pile it, and when it's time to, to put it by the curb, put it by the curb. But just because it happened last weekend doesn't mean that you get to put it by the curb this weekend. It just doesn't really.
We need you back here.
Education.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, did you have something to add to that list?
Oh, no.
Of what everybody else has said, junk vehicles?
Oh, no, no, I mean, we've worked on, before the junkyard, we had the house that built forever to build, and illegally tied into the sewer and everything, but the city's been working great. People, if they don't call the city, they'll come, call me, talk to me, and I'll contact Scott, like, hey, you know, like, uh, he brought up the brush cleanup, this past brush cleanup, they did an awful job. They left brush.
Do you know why that was? They used the claw. So, we complained that they weren't using the claw, and they came through and they used the claw, and when they did it, they don't get out of that truck. So, when they use the claw, they don't get out of the truck. They don't come back and, and just get a broom and sweep it up, and that's something y'all can complain to waste management about, we can bring them in and talk to them about their contract, but they don't get out of the truck. So, when that claw came through, if it picked up the pile and it left debris behind, that debris stayed where it was.
Yeah, it was in the street and in my yard.
That's what happened.
But, don't want to, I don't want to get a violation, because I did what I was supposed to do, they just didn't do a good job. So, that's why I contacted you to say, hey, pass it on.
Yeah, I, I looked into that, because you weren't, there, there was three or four people.
Yeah, there were several, yeah.
I can tell you, waste management, when they used the claw four years ago, waste management, they used the claw, and then the guy got out of the truck.
I know, but they don't do that anymore.
Well, then we need to complain to waste.
I agree. That's, I, I, I'm not, anyway. I'm saying, that's, that was the, the rationale was given, is we don't get out of the truck. Your, your contract doesn't pay us enough to get out of the truck, I guess.
But, yeah, no, they, they all hit the nail on the head, especially with the easements thing. It, it impacts the way the city can take care of what they need to take care of, especially with the power lines to going through the center of town in there for businesses. There's these trees that were put in the easement, and with the, when it blows right, it blows a transformer and takes the power out at the store. Because trees were allowed to grow there, you know? But that's it.
All right. So, I think we have our list, and we're saying, we'd like to do the split approach that is having our cops keep an eye out for it, our utility workers keep an eye out for it.
But there are some issues that we can start addressing, and I'm, I'm glad, this was good. It was long, but it was good.
Yeah. Thank you. You have an extra legs there. All right. Next item is staff reports. All right. Was there anything that you wanted to highlight on the staff reports?
Um, no. Um, no, not really. I, I, I did want to just point out Lions Park, we had hoped to open in May, I don't think that's going to happen. I think we'll probably be opening in June, but you can see how much is going on at that park and, and all the work that's happening there. As you heard me mention, um, attending, I, I found out on Friday that, uh, the city's been participating in ACS. ACS is the parent company of iInfo. It is wholly owned by the cities and counties that, uh, subscribe to it. So, it is a non, not-for-profit, it's, uh, interlopal, all run by interlopal agreements. It's, meets the purchasing regulations that cities have to follow as far as participation. And, um, I, again, I told them as I left today, I thought that we're using about a tenth of, of what iInfo had to offer after kind of listening on Sunday. I went on Sunday to their summit. So, they, I found out on Friday, they're having a summit, they're here in town, they're here from Sunday, or from Sunday through tomorrow. Um, so I was able to attend some sessions today and some sessions on Sunday, and I learned we really aren't using it. I don't think we're using 1% of what they have to offer. They have quite a bit that they can, uh, help us with, from ID badges for our employees that, uh, from security, the building cameras, um, that are, you know, they, they will, are able to get to us at cost, because, again, they're, they're not, they don't make money on, on their business, they charge basically administrative fee that helps pay for their overhead, and that's it. They really are, they're, 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 they're a user-based group, so that it's largely the emergency management coordinators in all these counties that are members, and it's hundreds of counties. I think there are 140 counties in Texas, um, that are driving kind of what they need to be done, and so they've built a lot of capability into their website that has to do with notification, mostly to do with, in, in, in major, um, disasters. So, they, if you think about all the kind of complexity that's involved in a disaster, getting people registered, getting, um, the notifications out, being able to do it on a geographic basis, being able to have forms at the ready, being able to have a document center where you can post it, having, you know, web links and QR codes, and they've got all that. And so, um, I, I'm really excited about our ability to leverage some of that to resolve some of the issues we've really been struggling with. Mainly, how do we notify people in a timely manner when something happens? When we had that outage in, in Country Village, and it only impacted two blocks, lo and behold, had I only known, we can go in, there's a little map feature that I can go in and literally with my finger, draw where the houses are impacted, and only notify those houses. And I'll have to send it citywide. And I, I, that apparently has been in the case for, for a little while, so, and I'm not blaming my staff, because I, I don't think they got, as, as I was told before, they got a login, they got no training. I didn't even know who to contact about it. And so, anyway, I was very, very glad that, uh, fortuitous that, that Judge Lou reached out to us, because I'm, I'm really excited about some of the things we're going to be able to do.
I was.
And I think we'll save some money, because.
I want to call that out. I mean, I think that was really cool. Uh, the judge has been looking at different areas that he can help us out, and he called us in specifically for this. The notice was a little bit late, but the fact is, he's looking out for us, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll applaud him next time I see him. One of the features of that is, is that you all, uh, will have the ability to do, um, emails, uh, so, there, there'll be, if, if the county, if there's, one of the, one of the functions, it's a sign-up function, is, do you want to know about meetings and notices or hear from your elected officials? Well, if y'all wanted to do, like Herb does, a, um, notice to just your district, we could create district informational lists where you contact your district. You have an emails group that goes through this iInfo. Now, that would have to be vetted, we'd probably need to get legal on those before they go out, just to ensure that, that what's being said is appropriate, et cetera, and accurate. But beyond that, I mean, it's a great, it's a great, it's got a lot of functionality to that, like I said.
Very hard to keep the emails correct and current though.
Yeah, this was, well, this will work through email and cell phone, and cell phones are a little more reliable. But a lot of people change their emails, but the cell phone's a little bit more sticky.
The nice thing about this, well, one, we're getting ready to have the portal for the, um, because of the AMI system, so we're trying to figure out if there's a way to integrate those through APIs, so that we can have, um, basically associate those with iInfo.
Well, we can, I know that I can export all my utility data into iInfo, and then it will true up the data and create one, one data for that, one.
One record.
Five, one record for that person. Then I can export that information back into, into my encode to ensure that, well, let's say I had an iInfo, someone signed up and they gave me their cell phone, but in encode, they didn't give me their cell phone. And once I link all that data, I can put it back over into encode and ensure that I get all the data in both places.
Because I get it on both, I get it on my cell phone and my email, both.
Well, the other really cool thing is, yeah, so I do too. Um, that's why I don't, I, I have to figure out.
I get it on my email, I just don't get it. And we had looked at it.
On cell? Yeah. You got one tonight, right, during the meeting?
Well, yeah, I got the.
There was a test.
The other night.
Yeah, there was a test while we were sitting here tonight. Um, the other thing that, that is really neat about this, this kind of ties into the tourism report that, that y'all have, is, um, we've been looking at ways to better, uh, create a, a, a record of who visits. iInfo has a little QR code that applies to visitors, so they can scan this QR code and give us just a little bit, a few details about themselves, so that while they're here, let's say we issued a boil water notice, or there is a tornado, or there's some other event. If they were staying three days at a hotel or down in the park, uh, at their RV park, they could sign up for this thing, and while they're here, they'll get those notices. When they leave, they won't get them anymore. But what's important about that is their record stays in our system, number one. Number two, depending on what we put on that form, which is completely customizable, we might be able to capture things like, what's their resident, the, the city and state of residence. So, when you talk about having like a mass event, if we can get people to participate, that is, that's a big if, but it'll be greater than one, you know, it'll be greater than what we have right now. I'm really excited about the data that we're going to be able to harvest for tourism purposes. So, anyway, I'm, it was great.
Very carefully on that.
Yeah.
Because of privacy.
Well, again, it's, but it's, 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 yes, I understand. We wouldn't utilize it for marketing purposes, it's really about understanding our own appeal and our, you know, how well our marketing is working. Not necessarily to go out and push notifications, we'd have to actually get their permission to do that, but I'm thinking more of, uh, just collecting the data to start with. It, it would be a really good way to get some.
Demographics.
Oh, yeah, some good data on who's visiting. Pretty cool.
So, I've got three questions. Have we started advertising for David's position?
Yes. The, the week he, like, literally, I think, the day of his party, we had.
Okay. Uh, number two.
It's on the paper, it's on our, uh, we did it through, um, so ADP, uh, we, because we irradiate ADP clients, we have, I think, three of the big, uh, search firms, that when we enter it in ADP, it goes through those firms, that's what we're going through right now.
Okay. Uh, then, uh, you know, the barbecue place is pulled out. They're not.
Two M?
Yeah, they're not going in anymore.
No, I did not know that.
Yeah, I just got told.
They pulled out.
Yeah.
The place on used.
I think I'm going to cry.
The, the new one being, the, the, huh?
The Danes?
Yeah, they pulled out.
Who told you this?
The contractor that's working on the building.
Okay, because it's not a rumor, right?
No, it's not a rumor. They pulled out. So, we might want to see what's going on and everything over there.
Well, that's kind of their business and.
Well, but it impacts us, because if, like, we have it here on our, our little report.
No, that's just the fact that they're doing work there.
But, because that's going to impact permits and everything, because this being a change of vendor and what have you, if it continues, but just.
It's just good information, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Um, the third thing was, um, did the contractor for the, uh, uh, smart meters brief you on what they've been experiencing in River Bluff?
No, you mentioned that.
Yeah.
And I, I, I want, I want to be clear, though, like, I, I don't, I don't want us to take what is a few incidents and then think, well, that's going to be the case.
No, I'm just getting it out there.
Apparently, there were some places where, uh, they were trying to do the meter change out, and they ran into an issue getting it connected up, is that correct?
Right, and what they've found is if it's on an incline, on a hill and everything, the ground would be shifting, some of them were really, really close, and then others had shifted far enough, far away. And then, uh, on some of the connections, they would not fit into the smart meter for the ones.
Okay, they know, they, they did take, well.
And it's taken them three hours to do just one.
Well, but again, I don't expect it in the case of every block.
Oh, yeah, no, but just.
Remember, they did 65 case studies before they started the project. And when they did that, they gave us a report that said, here's what we found in the field. And we found incidents where the box was like this, right, you know, the box.
Yeah.
So, the box, and the meter should be square in the middle, should be right where that is, right?
Right.
But instead of it being right there, it was like right here, or right here. And there were other, like, because of shifting.
Shifting.
So, they knew that some of that existed. Um, and, and anyway, so we know that there's some that's going to be challenged, but I'm not getting a report every time I render a project.
Yeah, no, no.
All of that's baked, should be baked into the process.
Because the, why I'm, why I'm bringing it up is because in case, when they start in the other areas, and if the, your, your, you know, people in your district come and talk to you about this concern, you know, because I had people come up to me, hey, it took them three hours to do this and three guys in order, is that normal and everything?
No, it's not normal.
I'm like, no, it's not normal, but just that way we're all informed.
It's kind of like you heard from this gentleman, you know, it just depends on what you run into.
Right.
But they did tell us that there were different circumstances that they found, and they tried to document, uh, so that they kind of know what they're up against.
Okay.
That's, that was part of that whole bid process. So, I don't, I don't think so, well, well, number one, as far as contractual cost, you know, it, it won't be an issue, because we've already signed all that, but, um.
Well, I think that, uh, she actually brings up a really good point. As we're going through these big projects, uh, let's try and get, uh, a report out specifically on those projects.
Well, but do you want to hear about everything that's broken every time?
Big things, big AMI.
Yeah.
So, with the AMI, with the River Bluff, we're going through, well, even with the streets, just to report out, hey, you know, this is kind of where we are with it, these are some of the issues, this is how we're dealing with it.
This is our, this is our first big, these are our first big projects, so that is what we're intending to do.
Perfect.
I am concerned that we lost David, and that I have a folk works director who has three supervisors who already have full-time jobs. And I, I, it's one of the things that's been, I've been worried about since we started the CIP project, and now, we kind of timed the projects so they would happen at different times. Well, guess what?
All at once.
All at once. We just, you know, the, the, River Bluff was, was freed up at the exact same time we got everything ready to do the AMI. That wasn't supposed to happen, folks. That wasn't supposed to happen at the same time.
Yeah.
So, pray for Tom, pray for, for John, because, uh, there's going to be, it's not going to be fun for a while. And they've got to, we desperately need to fill that position, that, that position, because, yeah, I, I fully anticipate there's, this is, there's kind of like, scared me a little bit, but kind of like, uh, Mr. Williams said, you know, that it's going to get ugly, there will be some, this isn't going to be perfect, we're going to miss some stuff. But we're going to, we're going to do our best to provide updates on how each of these is going. One of the ladies was asking, are they going to change up electric meter later? Yeah, that's going to happen later, but we'll let you know when that's happening, just like we did with the water. Um, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And the other thing, I want to make sure that we're careful about, um, any kind of, like, the thing about, um, any kind of restaurant or anything like that, we need to be very careful not to spread rumors.
Oh, yeah, oh, I know.
And so, we should not bring that up, uh, in a forum like this where, uh, we could potentially propagate a rumor. So, let's not talk about things like that, just updates unless we've confirmed it.
Well, it was in the thing, so it was on the agenda, and.
I'm just saying to be responsible to the people.
I understand, I am a responsible individual, I was just asking the question.
Cool. All right. Um, things on, so the next item is future agenda items. Uh, is there anything that we have not covered yet on the pending list?
We're late in that. On May ninth, I got three things. One starts at noon and ends at four, one starts at noon and ends at 4:30, and then the city council meets. What's going on on May ninth?
The noon to four, you should only have one of those. I may have sent out two invites.
Okay.
Uh, one might have been a placeholder, and then one was the actual. One might have been a placeholder, and then one was the actual event. The-
You know, they have ways to update the-
No, 'cause I-
Buzz sensor, but I don't wanna do that here. Go on the workshop.
So noon to 4, he's so mean. The noon to 4 was the workshop, and that'll be at Elsis Hall next door.
Okay.
They're giving us the Friends discount.
Good.
So that's noon to 4, and then we break, and then we come over here. Now, I'll be honest, I've seen the list, it's a long list.
For the, for the regular council meeting?
For the, no, for the workshop.
Oh, the workshop.
And the regular meeting.
But the people who get sworn in and everything, that's at the council meeting, that's not at the workshop.
Right, that's correct.
No, y'all, they'll get sworn in, and we'll have to take, you'll need, for sure.
At 5:30, okay.
And, yes, cheer everybody.
Okay. I think I may be sick that night.
I'm trying to, I was trying to pull the files so I could read to you what is on the pending list, and I just wanna remind you, I mean, I think this is probably a good exercise for us to go through, when there is a, when we're talking about future agenda items, so then at least you can see, it's, what?
Well, if you're looking at, the other thing is, you know, the fire chief with the ESD out here?
Chief Cook.
He gave us an update, I, every time he gives an update, I feel really good. But I guess, is he scheduled to give us another update?
He is, he's gonna come drag on the ISO. We should have official word on how our ISO turned out, and I think he's gonna have some very good news for us.
Right, so, so, good, good, that was-
Well, I talked to him just last week, and he said that he was getting prepped for that. So it may not be May 9, we're gonna have a pretty hefty one, but they'll also talk about some of the new equipment, they're getting the, they're getting a ladder truck as well.
We didn't do the airport stuff tonight.
Well, because I'm not meant to give us a-
Oh, good. So, and I don't know if they'll have a meeting between now and the, and the next meeting, May 9, but we have some changes on the airport board. We have new councils swearing in, sorry, guys. Personnel policy review, I think that's questionable, whether I'm ready to do that. That's really, I have a personnel policy group, action committee, they haven't met in a couple of months, I've been derelict and staying with Jonah, and these other folks have been assigned to that. So this is kinda my way of creating-
Pressure on you.
Yeah, pressure on myself, a due date, but I don't think that's gonna be great for next time. My report, that's what the CA stands for, received issues report, surplus equipment list will be on consent. We had that item ready technically on Friday, but it wasn't on the pending list, and I pushed it off to the next meeting. Balance scorecard facilitator agreement, we may be ready with that item in the next meeting. Historic home plaques, this is a recommendation coming from HLC, I believe that'll be ready.
No.
No? Not for May 9?
Yeah, we need to-
Okay. And then proclamation honoring William Billy Hooper?
Who's that?
He was our reporter from the Hondo Anvil that passed away unexpectedly here about three weeks ago.
Okay.
Hopefully, we might something for a drink.
I did move the mayor's report to the next one.
Is it this one?
Yeah.
Review application, appoint airport member advisory report.
That's one of the highlights.
You moved those on, from the other one. And you wanted your report as well as mine on this one?
Yeah, I wanted to move it off of this one, just because I wanted to get it more attention.
Yeah, I know, but you want it on the May 9 meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then, so that's what I have so far.
And Arnie has asked to have the artist-
The poppy, right?
Yes, he, the artist-
Yeah, recognize artists of poppy poster.
Yeah, great.
This one was on there.
Yeah, we could add on there, the post Alsatian Festival of Texas party report, which happens on Saturday, but, oh no, I'm just joking. I have another post thing, but I'm just reminding everybody, Alsatian Festival of Texas is Saturday.
Don't forget, Saturday, this Saturday.
What's this Saturday?
Alsatian-
Festival.
It's the Alsatian Festival? I'm getting repeated, sir.
You mean the, the Alsatian Festival is happening on Saturday?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So these are our items, so maybe it's not as bad as I thought it was. I, in my head, I have a lot of-
I swear there was more.
I know, I have a running list. I'm a little worried. UDO I have down on May 23, but you talked about maybe, you talked about maybe bringing that forward, right?
Yeah, what we might do is, if we're not ready with it, at least do a UDO scope review.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with that.
Well, so maybe leave that where it was?
Well, okay.
Or however you wanna do that, that's fine.
That's all right, I got you.
Maybe we do a review on the 9th and then an approval on the 23rd.
Are you gonna do a mayor's report two meetings in a row?
I know, I'll probably pull that one up.
All right. So tomorrow, I'll go through this with staff to see what we missed. They will add it. This is, you know, y'all have access to it as soon as you want, you can go look, it is updated generally in real time, as real time as our internet allows. So if we make changes tomorrow morning, you'll see them by, you know, tomorrow morning. That meeting's at 9:00 AM, it'll be over by 10:00, 'cause we have a meeting at 10:00.
Backing up where I was gonna say, in the tourism report, Garrett Hammond's really helped different organizations getting that out, including the Alsatian Festival, he's been a big help on that. And on that, our mayor, as well as our county judge, will be open today. And I had confirmation today that we are gonna have Cronenberg and Westheimer there, which we couldn't get last year, we could get it this year, Bradford, Cronenberg, Austin, we can get it. So we're set.
Well, I'm glad that he's got his priorities in order.
That's it, that's it.
Final.
We had extra gas money.
Yeah.